Good evening, and thank you for your patience. Call the meeting to order for the May 26 regular council meeting. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
I will be conducting roll call verbally. Councilmember Brenner?
Here.
Councilmember O'Neil?
Here.
Councilmember Dixon?
Here.
Via Zoom. Councilmember Blom?
Here.
Councilmember Duffield? Mayor Protam Muldoon? And Mayor Avery?
Here. Mr. Harp, is there a closed session report?
Thank you, Mayor Avery. There is no closed session report this evening.
Thank you. Now is the time for the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Councilmember O'Neil will give the invocation, and Joy Brenner will give the pledge.
Please bow your heads. Lord, thank you for this gathering. We ask for your blessing of wisdom and guidance as we address issues important to our community. We thank you for your use of medical means and direct intervention for the sick in our community, and we thank you for your hands of comfort in times of trial, and thank you for your leadership that you've entrusted, and these things we ask in thy name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk?
The City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The City Council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items.
Thank you. Now is the time for council announcements and oral reports from council members on committee activities. Councilmember Brenner?
Brad, could you come back to me?
Yes. Councilmember O'Neil?
I have none today.
Thank you. Councilmember Dixon?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I have a few items. First of all, let me just get to my notes on aviation-related news here. That was going to be the last one. It's the first one. Okay. Our latest aviation activities update provides an overview of the good work, excellent work, I think, I believe, work being done, accomplished by our aviation committee, and what we are seeing in terms of air travel demand. The city's worked with our local and federal elected officials to mitigate aircraft noise impacts and much more. I encourage all viewers and residents to check it out. Go to newportbeachca.gov/jwa and subscribe to receive these updates in the future. You can do so at newportbeachca.gov/subscribe. And our next aviation committee meeting will be next in two weeks, Monday, June 21st, at 5:00 p.m. via Zoom, and all are welcome. And that is on aviation. All right. The next item is, well, Ms. Brenner is going to speak on homeless, I believe, so I'll skip over that because we did a homeless visit. My next town hall is June 17th, virtual town hall at 5:00 p.m. I encourage all District One and beyond residents to attend. I'm very pleased speaking about District One news. I hope all of you saw the announcement by Discovery Cube about the sale of the property of the Balboa Fun Zone and Ocean Quest property in Balboa Village to longtime, like decades-long-time Newport Beach residents, the Pyle family, David and Henry Pyle. And they are the investors, the buyers, the purchasers, and they intend to maintain, preserve, and protect the property and improve. And it's really exciting that they are making this investment and to continue the visitor-serving, resident-serving, business-serving investment in Balboa Village. And we've talked a lot about that recently and how important that investment is. In addition, coincidentally, moving forward also, the long-awaited plans for the Balboa Village Theater are moving forward. Community Development and myself met with the property owners that bought the property, I think in 2015. And so it's been in a constant state of engineering, value engineering, but I can't really speak too much to the plans. But I personally, and I think staff, was very excited by their approach to the Balboa Village Theater as an iconic historical building in iconic Balboa Village. So a lot is happening in Balboa Village, and it'll be exciting to keep everybody informed. We spent in the study session a lot of time talking about RENA and the RENA numbers, Regional Housing Needs Assessment. And many of you know, because I occasionally report on my membership on the SCAG Regional Board and OCOG, which is the Orange County Council of Governments Board. And last week, at our Board of Directors meeting of OCOG, and the Orange County Council of Governments authorized legal counsel to file a petition for writ of mandate against the California Department of Housing and Community Development, otherwise known as HCD, challenging HCD's application of the Regional Housing Needs Assessment statutes. And specifically, I'm just reading from the statement just so I get this correct, factually correct. "Orange County jurisdictions are currently following the state's housing statutes and are working hard to update housing elements to meet the number of housing units assigned to them via the six-cycle Regional Housing Needs Assessment methodology. However, OCOG recognizes that Orange County's citizens and taxpayers deserve to be treated fairly under the law. Therefore, on behalf of its members, OCOG is challenging the regional determination established by the California Department of Housing and Community Development. Simply, HCD did not follow the statutes outlined in state law to develop the projected number of units needed in the next eight years to adequately house Orange County's population." So very simply, OCOG is challenging, and we, through legal means, and don't know the outcome yet, but this process is just beginning. And it was a unanimous vote by the cities, including my vote in support of taking legal action at this first step. And we are committed to getting some answers on the methodology. So I think that is it. I do have one item, A1, an item, a proposed A1 item. I would like to develop an initiative with council support, obviously, to make Newport Beach beautiful again, or Newport cleanup. Some public-private effort with our businesses and our residents who care so much about our city and maintaining clean standards that, just like many years ago in America, make America beautiful again, or Los Angeles beautiful, or Newport Beach beautiful. I really truly feel that we're slipping a little bit. And I'm not being critical of our great staff in public works. It's what I've really learned, and we'll talk about this later on this evening in the budget discussion. It's really a factor of appropriating the necessary funds because we have to make the case that there is a need. But I'd like to make it a community-wide effort, and more to come on this. But that's the idea that I'll talk about more later, but the community to rally around making Newport Beach beautiful again. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Blom?
I'll keep mine quick. But I had the opportunity to ride with one of our law enforcement partners, Huntington Beach Air Support, and kind of see what they do for our city in addition to Costa Mesa and Huntington Beach. And it was one of the most amazing things. And seeing our city from the sky and really what we've done here and how well-preserved it is, and especially in comparison to some of our outlining partners, is unbelievable. And seeing the support that we've garnered with HBR support and how they assist our police, and even seeing routine, just checks to save our resources has been really unbelievable. You know, they're quick to the site. They can report back really, really speedily. And it was just unbelievable, you know. And I think we're so privileged to even have the support of people like that helping our law enforcement. And, you know, you really feel how safe Newport is from the sky when you can see from about 15 blocks away someone's picnic table in the middle of the night on the beach. So, you know, I think we're pretty well-covered out there. You know, I just, I want to say thank you to all the law enforcement out there and public safety guys. It's a serious job, and you can hear the radios chattering when you're up there, and it doesn't ever end. And there is no sleeping hours for that. So it was just, it was really great to see from that side of things. And so I think sometimes we always need to remember that we are about as lucky and privileged as people get in any city, in any town, in any world. And, you know, we have some irritations here, but they're certainly not problems. There are some irritations that we always need to get over, and we're constantly working up here to help alleviate some of those. But it's a constant. So thank you all. Thank you, guys.
Noah, were you over at my house at 2:00 a.m. last Saturday?
We were buzzing in specific. I just wanted to show them where you live, Mayor.
Mr. Duffield?
Thanks. Real fast, we had our first in-person water quality committee meeting, which has probably been more than a year, and went well. And I'm glad we have new members. They're great. They're very focused. They're going to contribute new, fresh ideas and what have you. So that was a positive. And then I want to do a little shout-out to Paul Blank, our new harbor master. He's probably sick of being shouted out, but I'm going to tell you summer's starting. And we have a, first time, a real harbor master that really, really grew up here, knows the harbor, and can help us out immensely with that background. So I just, so keep it up, Paul, and good luck this summer.
Mayor Protam? Ms. Brenner?
Yes, thank you. I have a few slides. The day before Memorial Day, Senator Dave Men's office called, and I met with the senator and Newport Beach Exchange Club member, George Leslie, at our Field of Honor. Senator Men was very impressed by what is done there, as everyone is. He also, though, was very interested in talking about the issues which are most impactful to Newport Beach. We talked about several, and I emphasized that local electeds are often stuck between competing state agencies. So we really can use the help of our representatives in Sacramento to navigate those conflicting priorities. And then on Memorial Day, Diane Brad and I attended the Memorial Day ceremony at the American Legion, which is just one of the most inspirational things that you can ever possibly do. I think we have a slide on that, too. We were able to hear a speech by a Gold Star mother who had everyone in tears, and a Colonel from the Marine Corps that just inspired us all, talking about his men and the dedication of these people who work so hard to protect our way of life. And it was just really, it was a wonderful, wonderful day. And then Diane and I met with our homeless coordinator, Natalie Basmasian, at both of the Newport Beach Piers, as well as the two representatives from CityNet to see personally how they're interacting with the remaining homeless. We were trying to understand what we can do differently in order to deal with those who remain, even though we now have shelter options. And we kind of need to pursue that. I'm going to ask that we A1 this discussion because really, the people that are remaining are people that generally have some sort of mental health issue. I also met with Helen Cameron of Jamboree Housing, who sits on the Board of Mind and Be Well OC, along with the director, Marshall Moncrief, from the county. And the mental health efforts at the county are pretty phenomenal right now. And I just want to make sure that we are tapping into everything that we can possibly do there. I know Grace is looking at the mental health rapid-response units that are being done in some other cities to see whether that's something that we can do here. And we've reached the point that we've told people that when we had a shelter, we would enforce our anti-camping laws. And I think we're going to get pushback from our community if we don't show that we are absolutely doing everything possible to help the remaining people. So that's something that I'd like to look at in the future. And then the Corona Mar Branch Library opened officially yesterday for full-time service, and I'm so excited about that. So that's it for me.
Thank you. I've got a couple of fun things, I think, live perspective. And before I start that, as Joy mentioned, we were at the American Legion for their Memorial Day. It wasn't really a celebration. It was pretty tough. And it was something I needed because I think the last few years, I sort of lost what Memorial Day is really all about. And it just brought me straight up, I will tell you, hearing from a Gold Star mother about the loss of her son in 2007. He was a Green Beret. And I am just resolved to remember that every Memorial Day. It is really something. And I think we all tend to backslide a little bit on Memorial Day. And it's picnics, and it's a three-day holiday, but it's obviously so much more than that. And I'm really appreciative to the American Legion for bringing me up and to that fact again. And Fourth of July. So these are two events that my wife and I have attended in the past, and they're great community events. And this is the Newport Peninsula Bike Parade and Community Festival, and it really is a community festival. And it starts at 9:00 on West Balboa and 36th Street and ends in Channel Place Park with all kinds of games and fun for kids and just a lot of people coming together and celebrating the Fourth and getting it started right. And then if you're up for it and you go to that, you could bike up to Mariners Elementary and catch that one, which starts a little later. Let's see if we have the next slide here. I think it starts at 10:30. And a celebration at 11:00, 11:00 to 1:30. And, you know, that's a very large and accommodating park. And it's fantastic, as you can see in the photos. That's a real depiction of what's going on, what happens on July 4th at Mariners. And it's put on by the Mariners Elementary School Foundation and our City Recreation Senior Services Department. And they do a great job. And it's just a, it kind of really gets you in the mood for the Fourth if you can do one or both of those events. It's great. So thank you. Okay. Moving on, matters which council members have asked to be placed on a future agenda. Councilmember Brenner has asked council to consider directing the Park Beaches and Recreation Commission to agendize an Ocean Boulevard Bluff Walk presentation from the resident community group, who proposes to enhance the walkways and viewpoints with an emphasis on the pedestrian experience and forward a recommendation to the city council on an action plan for their consideration. Do you have anything else to add to that, Ms. Brenner?
No, this is a proposal that has come from the community through the Corona Mar Residents Association. And the point of referring this to PBNR is so that our Public Works Department doesn't have to address every single little change along Ocean Boulevard individually, using a lot of staff time, so that they have a comprehensive plan to work from.
Okay. Do we need to show our hands?
Actually, I need to do a verbal. Councilmember Brenner?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neil?
Yes.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Councilmember Blom?
Yes.
Councilmember Duffield? Mayor Protam Muldoon? Mayor Avery?
Yes.
That's unanimous, seven-zero.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
This is the time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion. Those are items 1 through 15. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members are received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the city council votes on the motion unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action. If you'd like to speak using Zoom, please raise your hand by using the hand button or star nine on your phone.
Thank you. Councilmember Brenner, do you have any items to pull from the consent calendar or conflicts to announce related to items number 1 through 15?
No, but I'd like to register a no vote on item four.
Thank you. Councilmember Dixon?
No, I too would like to register a no vote on item number four.
Councilmember Blom?
Yes, I have a conflict on number seven due to real property interests. I have a conflict on number 16 due to business interests. And I have a conflict on, oh, number 20. We're not on that yet. All right, well, there we go. I've got some conflicts here.
Thank you. Councilmember Duffield?
Well, I think I'm not winning the conflict award anymore. Kind of sad. I have nothing.
Thank you. Mayor Protam Muldoon?
Yes. Logic conflict due to business interests and telecommunications on items five, seven, and nine.
Thank you. And I have none.
Grab a motion when you're ready, Mr. Mayor. Move the balance consent calendar items 1 through 16 with amendments to the minutes with a no on item four by Councilwoman Brenner and Councilwoman Dixon, and recusal on items seven and 16 by Councilman Blom, and recusal on items five, seven, and nine by myself.
Thank you. Do I have any additional council comments?
I'll second.
Okay. Let's vote.
Public comments, Mayor.
Oh, sorry. So we will hear public comments on the consent calendar this time. Have any? Do we have any Zoom calls, telephone?
Good evening, council. This is Hoi An Yeh. I have a comment on agenda item 15, board and commission confirmation nominees. So I actually really don't know these boards, commissions, and the candidates. I just have a general comment on the procedure. I wish there was more transparency in the process. In February, you appointed all seven members of the Water Quality Committee. Two environmentalists were removed. One of the reappointed members only attended maybe a third of the committee meetings. Another person you reappointed has been on the committee for 35 years. And since 2018, this person has repeatedly asked me if I ever talked to Newport Beach restaurants about the plastic ban. It sounded like he actually doesn't believe that Newport Beach restaurants would be willing to be as eco-friendly as Laguna Beach restaurants. I mean, most importantly, this is not a good use of meeting time and resources to keep talking about the same stuff. And I gave you some other examples of how to run a committee meeting ineffectively. So I would think the effective change at this point would be transparency in your process of choosing committee members. Laguna Beach Council interviewed all the candidates publicly. Last week, the entire council meeting was interviews. So I hope you would also invest a special council meeting for such a purpose because these boards, commissions, and committees are too important for the city. Last but not least, thank you so much.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments on the consent calendar? Nope. All right, moving on. Now we'll have public comment on non-agenda items.
Mayor, we still need to vote on consent calendar.
Oh, sorry.
But I'll read the ordinance tires prior to conducting the roll call vote. For item three, ordinance number 2021-13, an ordinance of the City Council of City of Newport Beach amending Exhibit H, Newport Beach Municipal Code, Section 3.36.030, related to cost recovery. And for item four, ordinance number 2021-14, an ordinance of the City Council of City of Newport Beach amending Section 12.44.029, Area Benefit District Reserve of Chapter 12.44, stopping standing and parking restrictions of Title 12 vehicles and traffic of the Newport Beach Municipal Code to eliminate the Balboa Village Area Benefit District. Councilmember Brenner? Councilmember O'Neil?
Yep.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Councilmember Blom?
Aye.
Councilmember Duffield? Mayor Protam Muldoon? And Mayor Avery?
Yes.
That's seven-zero.
Thank you.
Public comments are invited on non-agenda items, generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city councils. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
All the comments?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Avery, members of the city council. My name is Jim Mosher, and I think it must be evident to all of you, as well as those in the audience, that the city staff recently has been having great trouble predicting the length of the afternoon's study sessions, which often run past the posted start time of the evening meeting. It seems to me that has two bad effects. One is for you. It causes you to have very long, tiring meetings that lead, I think, to somewhat foggy decision-making towards the end of them. And second, for the staff and the public, it means the time to show up for the evening meeting has become unpredictable. Today, it was posted to start at 6:00. It started more like 6:40, which is a problem, I think, for everyone. So when there's a problem, there should be a solution. I would suggest two possible solutions. One is to go back to what councils in Newport Beach historically did, which was to hold the study sessions at an early hour in the afternoon. They held the study sessions after lunch. They started at 1:00 or 1:30. When the study session, it could go as long as was needed to discuss the matter. Everybody went home. They had dinner. They came back for the evening meeting at 7:00. Another possible solution would be to hold all of your meetings, study sessions, and regular meetings in the evening, but to hold them on alternate weeks. So one week you had a study session. The next week, you had your regular business meeting. Either of those, I think, and perhaps you can think of others, would be better than the way it's currently working. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment on non-agenda items?
Good evening. I'm Doug McLean, Senior Vice President, Chief Marketing Officer at Newport Beach and Company. It's a pleasure to meet with you tonight. I know you've heard a lot of facts and information about the Restaurant Association. And so I just want to tell you from my point of view, as the person that's leading--
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
That's actually the next item.
Okay.
If you wouldn't mind, thank you.
So to that point, we're going to go on to current business. And this item has been taken out of order at my request. It's item number 16, Resolution Number 2021-53, of intention to disestablish the Newport Beach Restaurant Association Business Improvement District and fix the time and place of public hearing. Do any council members have a conflict regarding this item?
I have a conflict due to business interests on this one.
Do we have a staff report?
As this item came at the direction of the council, we don't have a formal staff report. But if you would like a brief summary, we certainly could provide that if necessary or answer questions.
Yeah, I don't think it's necessary. Ms. Brenner? Councilmembers have any questions, comments?
I have, I do.
Ms. Dixon, please go ahead.
Yes. I'd like to make a motion to retain the Newport Beach Restaurant Association the Newport Beach Restaurant Association Business Improvement District for one year, to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. During that period of time, that twelve-month period, to allow the Restaurant Association to reformulate its, structurally reform itself into conformance with the State of California nineteen ninety-four law. And allows the, this motion also includes permitting the Restaurant Association to continue to receive member dues, which go towards their marketing programs for Restaurant Week and other business support programs. So this whole issue came about, perhaps inadvertently, when it was a council member decided not to support the continuation. And so it was, we've descended into this without any public hearing, any public discussion. And the business owners who have just emerging out of COVID and, and just really drastically reduced business, were throwing this on top of them that they would not be able to scale up their marketing efforts using the services of Visit Newport Beach and just collectively promoting our restaurants in Newport Beach. It seems punitive. It seems unnecessary. It seems cruel. And I would like to give them twelve months of life to establish themselves and the formation and conversion of a new structured organization that we've all wanted them to go into the nineteen ninety-four law. So that is my motion.
I'd like to second that motion and make a brief statement in support of that. One of the reasons that I would like to give them another year is that I don't think we've adequately looked at the ramifications of dissolving it all of a sudden. The Corona del Mar bid had a year that they knew the writing was on the wall. And I don't feel like the restaurant bid had that same benefit. No council member has been attending their meetings. I've been attending all of the CDM bid meetings and was able to work through with them some of the issues that needed to be resolved. And the restaurant bid didn't have the benefit of that. I think that when our citizens realize kind of what is happening, they may have some input on this as well. And specifically, the Restaurant Week, I think that's something that if the, if they don't go forward with doing that, our residents are going to wonder why and wonder why it really wasn't vetted at the council level. So I'm not saying I'd like for them to continue indefinitely at the current structure, but I, I don't think it would hurt us in any way to allow them a year to work through the process of disbanding and to keep their activities where they are, which is what the public has come to expect.
Thank you. Mr. O'Neill?
Yeah, I'd like to respond briefly to Councilmember Dixon's comments that voting against this would be considered punitive or cruel. It is neither. This is something that I've been referencing for the past at least three years and have voted against for the last two years. Because three years ago, I said that that would be the last time I voted for a nineteen eighty-nine bid for a variety of reasons that I'm more than happy to go through if council members would like to hear me recite those yet again. But those are based entirely on government policy. They're entirely based on discussions that we've had up in the dais. They're, they're based also in discussions that have happened at the subcommittee that councilmembers Hurdman, Dixon, and Brenner had sat on. And so this is a continuation of a years-long, multiple-years-long discussion that, again, is neither punitive nor cruel. It is simply a discussion of public policy and one that I would take objection to any such a characterization going forward.
Thank you. Do we have any other council member?
May I just make another comment?
Sure. Please go ahead.
Well, I just want to say during the period of time that Councilmember Brenner and Mr. Hurdman and myself were meeting, we were moving in the transition. The information, the legal information, that was putting a constraint on the transformation was that they, it was, they couldn't use the existing funds and there was no path forward during the, and then COVID happened, and so things came to a screeching halt because they had their business, their livelihood to attend to. Prior to this action being taken at a previous council meeting, we had already, I had already set a meeting date with our city attorney and city staff and Visit Newport Beach to talk about this path forward in anticipation of the June thirtieth deadline this year and the budgeting process. And low and behold, there is a path forward, which is what Visit Newport Beach had been, had been advocating just for our city attorney to speak with this outside attorney that does the conversions. So we now know clearly, and Mr. Harp could speak to this himself if he would like to, that there is definitely a path forward that had never been known before to the Restaurant Association. And now we have determined that there is, and that is why it's appropriate to give them one more year. Because they had been told by city staff there was no path forward in terms of the legal hoops they have to go through. So yes, I do stand by those comments. It's, it's cruel to put them through this, even the time they have to spend taking away their business. You know, restaurants do not make significant profit margins. So they, if they make one percent, they're lucky. They have higher wage rates now with minimum wages going up, and they're going through the, the aftereffects of this COVID. I don't know why we have to be so cruel to say they're, they're out of business. They can't promote. They can't join together. We're taking that whole structural framework away from them. So again, I remain convinced that they are now able to do it. And I actually would like Mr. Harp to speak to that point because that did happen before this action. We did come to that realization before this action started. Mr. Harp, could you just speak to the meeting that we had?
Yeah, so just briefly, we did have a meeting to discuss kind of the, you know, the how you form a nineteen ninety-four bid. And it was emphasized that those are two separate entities. And they expressed that they probably need about forty thousand dollars total to form the new entity. However, that, everyone was in agreement that funds from the existing bid couldn't be used for the new bid. So I'm not sure that the Restaurant Association fully understood kind of what the path forward was and that they were two separate entities and how they go about forming it. They do understand that now. But the bids, the two bids are completely separate entities, and they don't impact each other. What's done with this one here today doesn't impact the new one from forming. I think that that covers it. I would like to clarify one issue, though. It sounds as if what Councilmember Dixon is proposing is, is basically to bring back what was originally on the agenda for May eleventh, which was agenda item number seven, and bring that back at a future meeting to have adopted the, of the plan approved and have the levying of assessments. That's not on the agenda tonight, so I probably should come back as a separate item at the next meeting, if that's, if that's correct. Councilmember Dixon?
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. So the, what would be the effect of the motion that I made then?
So I think, I'd probably ask you to modify your, your motion to bring back what was on the May eleventh, two thousand twenty-one agenda as agenda item number seven, which was a resolution of intention to renew the Newport Beach Restaurant bid and fix the time and place for a public hearing for the levying of assessments. My understanding is that you basically want to renew the bid for a year and allow for the collection of assessments. Is that correct?
That is correct. Yes, yes. Okay, I support that proposed amendment. To bring it back to the, bring it back to the council as we were going to do on May eleventh.
That's acceptable as a second.
Thank you. Mr. Muldoon?
Yes, a couple of points. A bid which requires a city to administer the process and, and even if the bid's not enforced, suggests that it's mandated. It must be collected, even if times are tough for restaurants. Dissolving that bid, which we're going to do tonight, I believe, does not mean that the Restaurant Association can't have the name, can't continue to exist, can't work together with other restaurants, as restaurants often do. A group of select individuals are great leaders in this field, and they, they enjoy the, the union as it, as composed now with the city behind it, but they have the, the ability to continue to operate on their own with this, with the same name, as far as I'm concerned, and happy to, you know, if that requires a city vote to allow that name to be used and, and, and to freely associate as businesses often do. But it, it's not the death of, of, of any specific activity or organization if, if, if they don't want it to be. It just means a city is no longer going to be administering it under sort of a dated legal construct. So it, it certainly is not cruel. One could argue it's actually very cruel to make restaurants believe they have to pay when they get that bill and have to spend money to join this organization that they may or may not want to be a part of. I think that's another way of, of, of looking at it. But no one's telling a group that they can't exist and that they can't associate, and they can't advertise, and they can't do activities. That's always encouraged, as far as I'm concerned. It just has to do with government involvement with the city. Thank you.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions for Mr. Harp. So everything you just said, Mr. Harp, has been something you've been telling the bids for the last three or four years. So I, I didn't hear anything new that you just said.
Yeah, we did have a meeting with the, with the, with Gary Sherwin and an attorney that he's been working with. And they, his, the attorney that was advising Gary Sherwin was under the impression that maybe you could use some of the restaurant bid money to form the ninety-four bid. And we kind of worked through those issues and came to a conclusion that you couldn't use that money. So I don't know whether there's any confusion on the part of the bid or not regarding that issue. But it seemed as if, at least from what I was hearing from Mr. Sherwin, that there was some confusion on his part about what funds could be used to try to establish the ninety-four bid and whether the eighty-nine money could be used for it or not. So I think that's what Councilmember Dixon was referring to.
Well, so the advice that you've been giving, though, to our bids for the last three years on this exact issue is exactly where you ended up, if I'm hearing this correctly.
That's right.
Yeah, I, I mean, this, and this is the, this, this issue's been discussed at the restaurant, the Restaurant Association, I know that it has. And they decided not to move, convert over the ninety-four because it would be too difficult to, to try to make that transition. And if I'm wrong, let me know. But I, I believe that it has been discussed and that the decision had not been to move forward with it, probably because I was the only vote for that for a few years. And I'm not the only vote anymore. And now the discussion is, let's stay one more year. But, you know, if, if I'm incorrect, I'd like to know that. But the, but I'm going to come back around to this, this idea that this is cruel. I just think that's obscene to, to accuse councilmembers of, of cruelty, especially this council that has done so much for our restaurants over the last year to perpetuate the government program that is the eighty-nine bid. The, the discussion for a long time has been whether this is something that can, is voluntary or not. It's not voluntary. It is a government program where people need to pay into it because that is the, that is the effect of the government passing this and saying that, and sending out bills under the government logo, under our city seal, that no one other than us is allowed to use. And if it is truly voluntary, it'd be a merchants' association. There is no problem converting to a merchants' association. There is the option of an eighty-nine bid. There's the option of a ninety-four bid. There's the option of a merchants' association. There's an option of nothing. But it's not voluntary. It is a government program. Concluding that a government program ought to end because it's bad public policy is a decision, and it's something that it can be well-held. But I, I just, again, I, I believe that accusing a colleague of cruelty in a situation like this is beyond the pale. Thank you.
All right, I'd like to make another comment, please.
Go ahead.
I think we, Mr. Mayor, I'd like, we, I think there probably will be some restaurant owners here, and they could speak to the hardships that they've endured. There is, the, the conversation that took place in the meeting with Mr. Harp and myself and city staff did identify a path forward related to the disposition of the existing funds. And that was new information that had never been, I never knew about it, and it had never been discussed publicly. So the reason I'm making this motion, and Ms. Brenner is seconding it, there is definitely a path forward. And I, I'm certainly supportive of seeing the process play out. And so that can we help our businesses grow by encouraging them to market. Using the resources of the city, which are de minimis, to issue a statement to collect dues to help them promote their business, ninety-some percent of the businesses participate. They participate in the meetings. It is certainly something that the community supports and the restaurants support. There are maybe one or two restaurants that have written or won in all these years who's opposed to the Restaurant Association, but we've never heard any other restaurant express opposition to this. So I'm supporting our restaurants and trying to find any way that they can, just like we support their use of public space in the sidewalks, I'm supporting any way. And that's using city resources at no cost. I would like to see the city continue to provide this framework for them to move forward, and then we step away and they're entirely independent, just to give them one last gasp to try to make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you. O'Neill, you, any other council comment? All right. So your public comment on this item?
Mr. Mayor and City Council, Phil Crowley, owner of Motto Mia and Crystal Cove, along with my bride Linda. I'm not quite sure what to say, but I'll dispose of my remarks, except to say, Mr., maybe Mr. O'Neill, it is my understanding, and I was on one of the special committees, that we were not able to move forward with the ninety-four. And there were lots of reasons about that. They were mostly around financial and organizational that basically said that, you know, as we are currently, you know, organized, would no longer be able to move forward in that manner at all. Couldn't use any resources, couldn't use, you know, city couldn't use money, couldn't do anything. Basically, it all just ends, comes to a stop. And then you have to attempt to start something entirely new voluntarily. I may not fully understand all the implications of the meetings that have gone on recently, but it is my impression that we have now found a path forward, a one that is viable, one that can work. And it is my understanding that, that all of us on the board in the Newport Beach and company is committed to moving forward just as quickly as we can with that. And so I'm, I'm philosophically fine with, you know, separating ourselves and, and ending the eighty-nine bid. And right now, the ninety-four bid, as we now understand it, appears to be a viable situation to move forward on to. So I'm, I'm committed to trying to make that happen and just request some time is all. Other than that, I have no particular argument with the position at all, sort of thing. Just need the time to get it done. So it seems like what we've been able to achieve has been a very successful public-private partnership that, over the years, has ultimately come to where we are today with some pretty significant participation, some pretty significant events, and some pretty significant successes. I'd like to thank for both the city and for the hospitality community. And I'd like to, to see us be able to kind of leverage that, stand on that, and keep moving forward as opposed to, you know, maybe having to start from scratch, sort of a thing. And it, and it feels like the, the cost and implication of that is fairly insignificant. I mean, there's a couple of things that come to my mind on the basis of what you said. Number one, as we've operated, I don't believe that, that we've enforced any kind of collection of any kind. I mean, it, it, it comes out under certainly the auspices of the city. But it's been voluntarily, and been voluntary, and there's been no attempt that I'm aware of to collect from anybody that either can't or doesn't want to pay, sort of a thing. And I think that if that were to be a constraining issue in this last year, then I think there, there has to be potential resolution to that as, as well. We've got some funds left and could probably operate, you know, this bouncing year without, without charging anybody if, if that was, you know, significant and making a difference in the vote. So, thank you. I appreciate your time.
And just briefly, I think that the new piece of information that maybe they're getting at is they talked about potentially having the city loan the new organization forty thousand dollars in order to help establish the ninety-four bid. So maybe that's the piece of information. But I wouldn't think that's related so much to the eighty-six bid. That'd be something that hasn't even been considered by the city council. But that was one of the, the discussion points.
That's good. Thank you. Good evening, City Council. I'm Doug McLean, Senior Vice President of Newport Beach and Company. My team directly oversees and manages the Restaurant Association. And we have the privilege of marketing the city and selling the city around the world, and it is a wonderful privilege. However, the council would like to vote tonight is, is good. If, if you would like to become a merchants' association, if you'd like the ninety-four law, I would like to pledge here tonight that we will make that happen. On behalf of Newport Beach and Company, we will make that happen within the next year of switching to the ninety-four law. We will switch it to however you decide and vote this evening we will do, and I will make sure that that happens. I have a few facts and slides I'd love to show real quick, if you can all put those up for me. Just a, a couple of really, really great points. We, we measure everything at Newport Beach and Company in economic impact and goals. I'm held to my goals. And for the Restaurant Association, those are dollars and cents. And these are just numbers from Restaurant Week. Restaurant Week alone, not everything else we do for them for the rest of the year, generates over three point one million dollars in consumer spending in the destination each year for Restaurant Week. That has totaled seventeen million for the last five years, which is tremendous economic impact. The Restaurant Week and Restaurant Association is working and is working very well right now. Next slide, please. We produced in the heart of the pandemic Restaurant Month. This was a brand-new event that we produced last September. This was a brand-new event that we produced last September to help our restaurants in the time that they needed it the most during the pandemic, which was just really a tough time. And we've moved on to this event and produced just, just tremendous results for our restaurants during the time that they needed it during the pandemic. This event actually has won numerous national awards, and we are very excited about the work that we've done. We put on Restaurant Week again in, in April this year. A lot of work this past year has been done to help our restaurant community. Next few slides, please. Great, here's some shots of, of Restaurant Month. Next slide, please. Next one. Great. And then I'd like to end that there's a, a new event that we're going to put on for Restaurant Association. This is brought on by Visit Newport Beach and the Chamber of Commerce, and that is a job fair. The restaurant community is under the next crisis they're in right now, and that is related to hiring. They cannot hire enough employees. And so the Restaurant Association is working to put on a job fair here at the Newport Beach Civic Center on July 1st to help our restaurants get, get jobs and get employees here in our, in our community to work. And so however you vote tonight, we, we will support that, but we really want to work with you to make sure that your vision happens and the Restaurant Association lives beyond into Restaurant Association. Thank you.
Mr. McLean, I have a question, if you don't mind.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
So what does that mean exactly? So you, so Newport Beach and Company would actively work, so if this passes or fails one way or another, actively worked with the Restaurant Association to reform it or get to the 94?
We feel that the Restaurant Association is essential to this destination. With over 450 restaurants, culinary is one of our top brand pillars of Newport Beach. And so we need a Restaurant Association to help with hiring and helping them with employees, but also helping them with marketing to consumers. So however it exists in the future, we will pledge to make sure that that organization will exist and thrive and move forward.
Would, is there a possibility that these, that Newport Beach and Company could provide the funding to get there, apparently take, to get to the 94?
That could be a possibility as well, yes.
I mean, could you, but you can't commit to it here?
Right, yeah.
But that's what I think's really neat.
As a bridge to get to the next future, we would, we would pledge everything to make sure that that would happen.
Within the year?
Within the year.
So however the vote goes tonight?
Yes, that's correct.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Ms. Brenner?
Go ahead, after.
Okay, go, please, Jim. Yes?
If it's with your permission, Jim Walker, Mongol Restaurant, past president of the Newport Beach Restaurant Association, Mayor Avery and City Council, I appreciate this time. If it's, it's okay, I'd like to pass something out that the Restaurant Association created. I'd like for you to read it, if you don't mind.
Sure, just give it to Mr. Harp.
There you go. You know, this is a hard night for me, because I've been involved in this association for 20 years. During that time, we've had the support, the guidance, and the funding that was needed to exist. This is the first time in 20 years where we faced being erased. It's sad because I've watched this association, and I've been a part of it, grow, and we're being, I feel, penalized for following instructions and doing our job. We inherited this bid, we didn't create the bid. The bid was created by a city council before this city council existed. We've only followed directions that we've been given, and we have done it in a great way. Right now, the Restaurant Association is better off than it's ever been. We require no funds from the city, and we require no staff time. That brochure that I sent out to you, if you look at it carefully, there's been an allegation that we basically forced people to pay. That's, was put in by your legal department. There's an allegation, and it's in here, that we didn't put in. The reason that we bid this brochure is because there is also an issue that people come and pay a fee and they don't know what it's for. We tried to educate people when they paid the fee that they understood that they were joining and being a part of the Newport Beach Restaurant Association. I wonder, after 20 years of being a part of this organization, where's the backlash? Where's the unhappiness besides with this city council? I, I am, and I have to agree, yes, it is cruel, and it is unfair because we've been blindsided. We were told that we could not go to a 94 bid. I don't care what you say, with all due respect, Mr. O'Neill, we were told we couldn't do it. I was part of that, I was part of that committee. I was told by your attorney, I was told by your staff. We had to cease and desist. We were told that we were not allowed to discuss it or go any further. I've been a part of this. If there's a better way, I'm a businessman, a successful businessman, I would take it in a heartbeat. To your point, we don't force people, Kevin, we don't force people. If somebody wants to opt out, they opt out. You force people. The city forces them because you administrate a 25% penalty fee. We waive the fees. We don't have the power. That's not within our bandwidth, it's within this bandwidth, your bandwidth. We follow directions. That's all we do, and we market. And so what you're putting out, this, under the bus right here, is $150,000 a year that the Newport Beach Restaurant Association gives to our community in the way of marketing restaurants. That's all we do. We're a rising tide to this community. We raise all boats. The people that don't join get the benefit anyway. I'm asking you, take a pause, give us a chance. We're willing to do what's necessary, but if you eliminate this, contrary to your thinking, there will not be a Restaurant Association. I know that Visit Newport will stand behind us, but you know what? It's going to take boots on the ground, it's going to take a whole different change. We have a successful structure. Let us, instead of killing us, why don't you join us? Attend a meeting. How many meetings have you been to? How much do you know about what we do? Have any of you done any due diligence? Well, perhaps you have, Will, but you know, you're right, you were one vote. In the history of this existence, you were one vote. I don't disagree with your opinion. I voted for you, I supported you, and I still do. I'm asking you from my heart, just put the brakes on, allow us to make this change with the structure we have created over 20 years. I've invested more time and more money in this community than anybody on this does, except Duffy. And I'm sure you're way ahead of me. I hope that my time, not only on this board, but on other boards and other bids, at least has earned me some respect, some value for my presence in this community. Because the next time you need somebody to feed your employees on Employee Appreciation Day, you know, our restaurants are there, and it's out of our pockets. Right now, we're going through probably the toughest time I've ever been through in my life in this business. And to take this now and take away what cost me a whopping $600 a year, that's just the tip of the iceberg, what we get out of this. I couldn't begin to afford that, and I can guarantee you that there will not be a resurgence or a re-Restaurant Association if you take this structure away. Restaurant people don't have the time or the inclination. I'm sorry for my emotion, I feel very deeply about this, and I ask you to put your pride and to put your whatever, and just work with us instead of killing us. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public, public comment on this item? I think none, I'll bring it back.
Oh, Mayor, there's someone on Zoom.
Oh, okay.
Hello, City Council, my name is Marin Howard, and I am calling in regards to the Newport Beach Restaurant Bid. I have sat on the, the board for the last year, and I will admit I was new to the board. And so, you know, my whole goal when I joined the bid was just to observe and kind of see what was going on. And, you know, it has been quite a difficult year for all of us restaurant owners. And I am a local restaurant owner in both Coach Mesa and Newport Beach as well. And, you know, I think the thing was, as we went through the bid and tried to do the transition of the 94 law, a lot of people on the board, as well as other restaurateurs that I spoke to, didn't like the idea of adding a tax item to the bottom of their bill, just like a T-bid. You know, at the end of the day, on your bill, whether you dine at a Newport, and you, if you dine at a Newport Beach restaurant, if we go to this 94-style bid, you know, there's going to be a tax at the bottom of your bill that everybody pays, and restaurants, restaurants are going to be responsible for paying this. And it's not going to be a $600 assessment fee that, you know, it could be $24,000 based on the numbers that they were discussing because they were percentages of sales and gross sales. And so I think, you know, everybody was looking at this as a possible way to reform, but there's a lot more money involved as we reform. And so, you know, right now, the, the bid is designed for Restaurant Week and, you know, Restaurant Month, and that's what it's formed for. With this T-bid idea and allowing to go to the 94, they're throwing those to wind, and I'm not partial to either one of those items. But, you know, what is the change they're going to make? What is the difference they're going to make over this next year? Because we haven't really seen it, even though we went through the exercises, we asked about the differences, and we, you know, we got consultants at $6,000 coming into the meeting saying that's their price to reformulate what we need to do. And, you know, as restaurant owners, I think we do know what we need to do. We need to market ourselves individually, you know. I think there's so much that the community can bring together that we don't necessarily need to go through the city to do, because there are limitations. You know, a group of us local restaurateurs tried to join together during COVID to discuss what was going on, and, you know, I happened to invite actually Phil Crowley and other restaurateurs to attend the meeting due to the Brown Act violation and things like that. So in certain ways, it being a city entity affects people coming together, where people who are on the board can't join forces with other members because they're not in a city setting, you know, having everyone hear about it. And I think it's just very important that we really look at this as, is the city willing to support another year so they can go and possibly charge restaurants more money? Or if they're willing to put this all on their own, that's excellent, they should front the money, the city should front the money for a separate entity to bid out and work outside of the city. Thank you so much for your time, and I truly appreciate you listening.
Thank you. Do we have any more public comment? Bring it back up here, anybody, all the dais, have any further comment?
Yes. I'd just like to take one last stab at this. I, I'm not either in favor or opposed to this bid continue. I don't really have a, much of an opinion one way or the other about this, but I think the timing is the issue. And the fact that on the end of COVID, we are forcing the bid to do something that's going to involve a lot of, a lot of manpower, as far as get, if they transition, getting out there and, and pounding the pavement, talking to the other restaurant owners, and we seem to be concerned about this being bad policy, but this is the same night that we're looking at our concern for the restaurants being so great that we're willing to waive all kinds of policy regarding outdoor dining because we know that they've been through such a strenuous time. I, I only think that we need to give them more time because of the circumstances. And, and quite honestly, if what we just heard is true, that it would cost them more to go to the new bid structure, they may end up going to a merchants' association or something, but I just feel like we need to give them the time to do that instead of putting the axe down right now at the end of COVID when they're dealing with so much. So that's my feeling.
Thank you. Any other comments from the dais? Mr. Muldoon?
Just a couple of questions, I guess. Have assessments for this year gone out yet? Mr. Harp?
So when you didn't reform the restaurant bid, you didn't approve a plan, so no new assessments were sent out, we haven't had the hearing or any of that, that's why I modify, I asked Councilmember Dixon to modify her motion.
And the $97 that they currently have on hand, how is that restricted as far as distribution or, or providing to another entity?
So that money would need to go back to the people that contributed it.
Oh, interesting. So it'll be a rebate for those restaurant owners?
All, all the money they have on hand, if it's disestablished, would go back to the restaurant owners.
Okay, thank you. Oh, just, just one point I want to make, from the dais, Mr., or from the podium, Mr. Walker, you passionately said that you don't enforce the assessment, we do. And yet you almost sound like you had a problem with that. Well, so do I, and that's why we're disbanding it. You know, you're hiding behind the city, trying to make us like, you know, we, you know.
That's Jim.
Yeah. At any rate, as I was saying, it's almost like you're enjoying a position behind the city. I don't mean it, you know, well, look at the respect you're showing right now. It's not a lot, and I've been respectful to you in explaining my position on this. It's almost like someone enjoyed hiding behind the city, having this, the city enforce it, we have no interest in enforcing it, and then claiming, oh, we don't want the city to actually enforce it. Well, then why need the city? I don't understand why, why you need it, especially if you're not enforcing it. So it, it's a, you know, there's a psychological factor, people feel like it's going to be enforced and they have to abide by it, and, and I really don't, I don't like it, to be honest. I think that the restaurants can, can associate with each other or not, it's totally up to them, and there's nothing stopping the restaurants from doing this on their own. Thank you.
Any further comment? Mr. Harp? What happens if the votes are tied?
I couldn't, oh, so if the tie, the motion fails.
Motion fails.
And so then someone can make a new motion after that?
Mm-hmm.
That'd be one option, but, or someone can make a substitute motion here.
All right.
Ultimately, if, if there's not a path forward to disestablish or to basically reform it, it just sort of goes into limbo.
Into limbo?
There'd be no new assessment, but the bid would still remain on the books.
And then what happens to the remaining funds in the bid?
They could, they could spend the remaining funds in accordance with the plan that was previously approved.
All right, thank you. Mr. Duffield?
So, this isn't a place where restaurants who don't want to do it come to share their view. We had one on the phone, but nobody else has come here to share the other side. I've asked restaurants, do you like this? And the ones I've talked to said, no. Restaurant Week, I sell a $35 steak for $22. They, they don't like it. And the $3.1 million that I saw in this thing, so what I'm, are you telling me that if you didn't have Restaurant Week, that 3.1 million wouldn't have been made? I, I was confused. So I, I just don't think, we're not getting all the information here, it's just too one-sided. And I, I just agree with Mr. O'Neill and Mr. Muldoon about this, that it's time we let them go, and I feel they'd be much better by themselves, working like I have to do, the city doesn't help me, I've got, should I have a rental boat association or something? And can you pay me money? And God forbid, there's a COVID and I need more. I don't, that's, that's irrelevant. We're all business people, we all have the problem. Nobody is exempt from the, the COVID and business problems. We, you wanted me to share my problems? You know, I couldn't even open for, I wasn't even open, you guys at least got to open. I was shut down. So, you know, I, I just don't think it's fair, we're not, we don't, if we had a room full of other people, but there's no reason for them to come, there's no motivation. So all we get is the one-sided thing. And I look at this brochure, and, you know, I, I read all these things in here, and I'm not sure what I'm reading. You do all these things, educational, how do you educate program with people with food? It's a nice brochure, but I'm, I'm sorry, I can't agree with this.
Any further comment? We have a motion in a second. Time to vote.
Councilmember Brenner?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neill?
No.
Councilmember Dixon?
Aye.
Councilmem, oh, Councilmember Duffield?
No.
Mayor Proton Muldoon?
No.
Mayor Avery?
Aye.
Motion fails 3-3.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve staff.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve staff recommendation.
Councilmember Brenner?
No.
That's for the staff recommendation in the agenda. Councilmember O'Neill?
Yes.
Councilmember Dixon?
Was that staff's recommendation? I don't know.
Correct. That's for staff's recommendation to disestablish.
All right, but I vote no.
Okay. Councilmember Duffield? Mayor Protem Muldoon?
Yes.
Mayor Avery?
No.
The motion fails 3-3.
Mr. Hart?
Well, I don't think there's any other motions to be made, so we just move on to the next item.
All right, thank you. We are now on public hearings. Item 17 is an ordinance 2021-14, disestablishing the Corona Del Mar Business Improvement District.
Mayor, this had been introduced, and this is now the public hearing for disestablishing the Corona Del Mar Business Improvement District. We're certainly happy to answer questions or if you want a brief report if needed, but if not, we can move forward.
Do we need a report? Don't think so. Okay. Oh, councilmember questions, comments? Okay.
I should say something about this.
Yes.
I just wanted to say that the Corona Del Mar bid has been diligent in what they've done. And they really had accomplished pretty much all their goals. And our business district is, it looks great, and they've done a lot of really hard work, and there's been a lot of time and energy put into it. And they planned, they saw the writing on the wall, they planned for this. And because they had achieved their goals, they didn't have any problem. Well, they may, it may have emotionally been a problem for them, but that they did what they knew the council wanted them to do and did it in a way that was kind of easier for us and easier for them and easier for everyone else to deal with. And so I just wanted to congratulate them and say thank you very much for all the hard work and all the years that you've put in to beautifying the Corona Del Mar Business District.
Thank you. Any other council comments? Seeing none, let's hear public comments from those in the council chambers, and then we'll go to anybody on Zoom. Anybody in council chambers wish to speak to this? Any Zoom calls? And we're going to close at public hearing, and we have a motion in a second.
Mr. Mayor, I'm wondering if Mr. Blom would like to bookend his family's relationship on this one and make the motion himself.
I'd love to make that motion. Thank you, yeah. I think my father helped start this one, so it's nice to see it end up here together, yeah. Thanks. Thank you, Will.
I'll second.
All right, let's vote.
Well, I'll read the ordinance title prior to conducting the vote. Ordinance number 2021-14, and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach repealing ordinance number 9724, ordinance 9815, and ordinance 9918, and re-disestablishing, let me correct that, and disestablishing the Corona Del Mar Business Improvement District. Councilmember Brenner?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Yes.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Councilmember Blom?
Yes.
Councilmember Duffield? Mayor Protem Muldoon? Mayor Avery?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0.
Moving on to item 18. This is a public hearing to consider resolution numbers 2021-54, 2021-55, and 2021-56, public hearing and adoption of the 2020 Urban Water Management Plan and Water Shortage Contingency Plan.
Yes, Mayor, we had also provided this presentation ahead of time, both to the city council as well as to the public. So certainly, we can go through it quickly if you'd like, or I'm happy to ask, answer questions. So up to the council here.
Well, I think this water situation has gotten more dire. And I think it's good maybe for, if we go through it quickly, especially with Mr. Bakoyevich here.
Good evening, councilmembers, and Mark Bakoyevich, the Utilities Director. I'm going to ask if we could just move to slide eight quickly. Excuse me, slide seven. Okay, so the item before you tonight is a state-required document that basically explains our water management needs as it relates to our entire portfolio and our sources of water, which come from groundwater and then also state water. And this document in general identifies, asks us to identify our reliability and assess that. And we've done that. And we've looked at it, and we've looked at a couple of different scenarios in terms of a regular year, in terms of a single dry year, and also with a five-year drought as well. And this document goes through all of those calculations. And at the end of the day, if we go to the next slide, basically what we're projecting is that we have enough water from the short-term and from the long-term standpoint, and we have the plans in place to meet any of those deficiencies in the future for a drought or a supply interruption and things of that nature. The next document that's there, too, is what's called a Water Shortage Contingency Plan. It's a brand-new, state-required document. And that document also identifies all of our target levels in terms of reducing water as directed or as needed in the event of a drought or as directed by the state or for some sort of supply disruption that may occur. And I'm going to move right to the end of the last slide. And so this item before you tonight is to approve, you know, the public hearing, approve these documents. They're very kind of standard documents that the state requires. And I'm happy to answer any specific questions if you want to go there regarding our water, current water situation or any of the updated requirements.
Thank you very much. Do we have any councilmember questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll go out to public comment on this item? Seeing none in the council chambers, do we have anything on Zoom? All right. Any additional comments, questions?
Yeah, my only comment, Mr. Mayor, is that for anyone wondering about water management, I do encourage you to actually read through the executive draft. That's part of the addendum here. It's actually quite fascinating, and will give you a very good overview of where your water comes from and what the City of Newport Beach is doing to make sure that it continues to flow freely and in a clean manner. So appreciate all the work that your team has put into this, Mark. And I'll move the, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Brenner. Oh, I'll move the staff recommendation.
I'll second. And I concur with Mr. O'Neill's comments, and thank you very much for your work. It's such a critical thing for us in this drought and to have such good management and a good system in place. And obviously, it's carried forward from many, many years of good management by past directors. And it's a great thing to inherit.
Brad, my comment's not really related to the motion, but I did want to ask Mark a question because I feel guilty when I'm watering my plants and watering my palm tree. And so your plan, does that take into account that we keep our trees alive and the bushes for the butterflies and the bees?
Well, yes, it does. However, if our reality changes in the event of a severe drought or a supply interruption, you know, we will be asking to implement restrictions, like reducing watering outside and things like that. So in other words, let's just say, for example, a major earthquake or something like that, where major interruptions happen or we have multiple years of drought, where we're going to be asking everyone to start ratchet down. And that's why this plan talks about all these steps to reduce to get there if we need to go there. And I just also, just one moment, want to recognize Stefan Catron, our Utilities Manager. He was the lead person in preparing these two reports, and I want to recognize him. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Close the public hearing and vote?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Brenner? Councilmember O'Neill?
Yes.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Councilmember Blom?
Yes.
Councilmember Duffield?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Muldoon? Mayor Avery?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0.
All right, thank you. We're on to item 19, a public hearing to consider resolutions number 2021-57, fiscal year 2021-22 budget adoption. City budget hearing, recommendations from the Finance Committee, and proposed budget revision items. Mr. Catlett? Mr. Muldoon has a question?
Mr. Hart, I believe I recused myself on the entire discussion last time.
Since you're voting on the entire, on the entire budget, you don't have to recuse yourself unless the specific items pulled. There's an exception under the Public Reform Act.
Perfect. One clarification, thank you.
Okay. So we have a staff report?
We do. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Scott Catlett, your Finance Director. We have a brief presentation for you this evening just to highlight the changes from the budget that you reviewed a few weeks ago. So just to recap the key points from the presentation we provided to you previously, we are expecting a strong budget surplus for the current fiscal year, and that will facilitate eliminating the reductions to the current year's budget, and that's proposed as part of the actions this evening. Also delivering a balanced budget for the year ahead with a small surplus, with revenue that's still recovering but remains below where we'd like to be. That will still, though, allow us to focus on the unfunded pension liability and also delivering additional neighborhood enhancement projects. So on the screen here is a summary from one of the attachments in your staff report that shows the changes that have been made to the budget that was presented to you two weeks ago. You'll see at the top there the three additions from the beaches discussion that was held at the same council meeting, as well as the revenue that comes in from the dissolution of the Belboa Village Parking District. The net effect of those two things is an increase in revenue in the general fund of about $280,000. You can see here on this slide the effect of that on the overall budget. So the budget is presented to you prior, at the prior meeting is in the first column. The revised number is in the second column. You'll see that $112,000 towards the bottom. And then as a result of the additional revenue, we no longer need to use reserves to cover the business license program that we put in place. It's your direction to waive business license fees in the current year for our businesses. So the bottom line is a surplus of about $32,000 and an $11 million ending projected balance. Also wanted to call your attention to a few of the attachments. There are attachments related to positions, and we discussed the new positions with you at the prior meeting. There also are some reclassifications that are detailed in that staff report. We also are required by the municipal code and CalPERS rules to attach the salary schedules and the position listings, so that's there as well. And then there's a budget amendment included, which is implementing the restorations to the current year budget that I mentioned earlier. So that brings back our facilities financing plan transfer for the current year, brings back our harbors and beaches transfer for the current year, also restores $2.4 million of neighborhood enhancement projects that were deferred during the pandemic. And then lastly, it implements the $1.6 million allocation to the general plan and to our permanent supporting housing project. Finance Committee met on May 27th, following your last meeting. And after discussing the proposed changes in the budget that staff presented, they are recommending to the council the city manager's budget as presented. With that, the recommendations from staff are before you on the screen, and we're here to answer your questions. Thank you.
Do we have any questions? The dais? Ms. Brenner?
I do.
So Grace, I'm concerned because I don't feel like we totally resolved how we were going to pay for additional sidewalk washing and trash collection. And we've been getting emails this week or just the last couple of days about a real trash problem at Pirate's Cove in Corona Del Mar and needing extra trash cans. So how do you, how do you resolve that? The other issue is, I mean, I've got a couple of other issues that are maybe not addressed in this budget, but things that may need to be addressed during this year. So can you tell us how you deal with those issues that come up that you don't have a line item in the budget?
Sure, happy to do that, Councilmember Brenner. I do want to point out, we did have an extensive discussion at the last session where I think Dave Webb, our Public Works Director, did a good job of talking about the different aspects of services that we do currently provide. So I certainly don't want to go, you know, into all of that. And then we did, with the council's discussion and kind of a straw vote, so we have $112,000 added in addition to what we do provide here in this new proposed budget. And that does include additional trash cans, maintaining portering service that we started in this last year, and then doing additional cleaning and trash pickups in the later part of the day. And in fact, I think we've already started efforts on getting the trash cans in. I think Dave Webb told me that there were some coming in even this week on that. So certainly with that, I do think that's going to provide a higher level of service on the trash side and maintenance of the areas, and particularly our high-traffic areas. And then in general, and I can certainly have Mr. Webb speak a little more on this, but as we do in the current year, as we have additional needs that come out, you know, and we've done that several times this year, where we've done additional power washings or spot cleanings as things come up. And we will continue to accommodate that and do that in this next year. And I do think we have a little more flexibility and bandwidth with this additional $100,000 that we're adding to the budget.
Okay. I mean, I'd like a little more reassurance about the sidewalk washing, but I'm trusting that you are going to make that a priority because we've heard so much from so many people about the filth that they're experiencing.
You know, we are very focused on that. It is a very high, you know, traffic areas that we always continue to provide a high level of service on. We, you know, we take all requests that come into us, you know, all complaints that come into us very seriously. I know we shared with you the last time all of the requests we put in through our quest system. So we're monitoring and managing the number of requests we're getting to and figuring out how we adjust and deal with that. And you know some of the constraints we have, too, right? Of, you know, when it's just that crowded, when we can get into some of those spaces, and we're working through that. And we're also looking at some ways we can get our resources stabilized. You know, one of the challenges when you're dealing with some of these service levels is getting contract resources or even permanent part-time resources, you know, on a stable basis. So we're looking at some strategies around that, too, as you know as well.
Those are creative solutions that I'm looking forward to hearing about because they're really win-win situations. Is there a number that we would recommend people call if they're experiencing dirty sidewalks in town? What's the best number for people to call?
You stumped me on that one, the exact number, so I'm bringing my backup here.
Yes, thank you. They can call our Public Works Office at 644-3311. And I don't have the other ones on board, but we'll route them to it.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Blom?
Thank you, Mayor. So this is a pretty in-depth document, and I think CSAB has done an amazing job. And the Finance Committee, as we sat through and went through quite a few meetings on this, and have really dove down. I think what's always important to remember, and Simone will tell me I'm slightly wrong here, but the city is a business. And at the end of the day, it's about balancing our budget. And I think one of the numbers that strikes me on this one, and really a commendable job to staff if we look at it, is the number about $32,000. That is our ending unrestricted fund balance versus our proposed and projected budget. So in a city that's doing about, let's say, 300 million dollars, ending with a $32,000 variant is not a variant at all. That means we are cutting it as close as we can. We've made a lot of cuts up and down the board, and I know there's a lot we want still. That's understandable. There's no business owner out there that doesn't want more to spend than revenue coming in. That's part of how we allocate dollars and cents for projects. And coming from the hospitality side, Joy, I understand where you're coming from on that one. You know, our residents, our guests, our tourists demands a certain level of quality. Our job up here is not an easy job when it comes to finance, and it means we do want to give our residents everything we can, but the reality is we can't. The reality is we have dollar constraints that are very important. And some of those CIP projects and those bigger projects we have to fund, those have to take precedent to the sidewalks. And sometimes, I'll always say this up here, and being on the business side of things, it is the responsibility of business owners to clean their own sidewalks. We can pay the power washing fees a lot less. They will be much less expensive if we hire someone to do it than they will if the city does. We're already spending, I think about, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we're at a quarter million dollars right now for sidewalk power washing? It's a quarter of a million dollars to power wash a sidewalk. That's a lot of money for our city right now. And I don't, I don't want to discount what we're doing. I just want to say that there is definitely a place where we have to allocate funds. And if we could allocate them to every resource, you know we would. But nobody wants to see those taxes in the city either. I think that we're working really hard on that, and I think And I think the Finance and honestly, Grace, they've done just an amazing job of being able to keep staffing levels up. And as we go through and look at what we don't have, I think it's really important to see what this city did, not only during the pandemic but moving forward, that we haven't dropped staffing levels. You know, we've done hiring freezes, and we've maintained those so that we can keep up our CIP projects. You know, our public safety sectors have done nothing but the greatest job in this with somewhat limited resources, and we've constantly worked to fund those things. And so Newport Beach is in a rare position, and I think a lot of cities aren't having at this stage in this meeting, of what to do with our finances. And I think it is why we've looked at some of these other items like bids and bringing dollars back into the city. Those dollars are important to reallocate into a general fund so that, to your point, Joy, we can use those money if we need all of a sudden to pull something out of a general fund to power wash, you know, a public park or something like that. But I do, you know, any restaurateurs that are listening, I ask you, clean your own sidewalks. They're your customers and your guests eating on them. I know there's a lot of us out there already doing it. It's part of taking care of our city, and it's not always the job of the dais, and it's not always the job of our city staff to take care of what we do. We pick up our own trash. You know, when we have complaints that people aren't cleaning up trash on the beach, we're not the trash collectors. We're just here to help facilitate a clean city. And so every problem is not start and stop at the dais. A lot of it is just the education and how we perceive our city. And so I just want to commend everybody in both Finance and City Manager's Office. You guys did a phenomenal job with this. And coming in, you know, $32,000 was pretty phenomenal. So, thank you all.
Ms. Dixon, I apologize. You were, you were next, but go ahead now.
Thank you. I couldn't agree with Mr. Blom more. I totally agree that it, it should be, and that's why I mentioned earlier at the onset of the meeting, a public-private arrangement. Everyone needs to take pride in our city, and I know many, most people do. But we do all, these have a lot of visitors that are, are having the impacts. What I've learned in, in dealing with the cost to keep our city clean, and staff has done a magnificent job, and they are responsive, so this is not directed to any criticism of staff. It's just that when they, like those sudden requests that they come in, then they, it's not budgeted. And that's the challenge that Grace is going to have. It's not in the budget. And when Grace, you and I talked about this on Monday, it's not in the budget. I, I think if John Pope is there, I have some slides. I just want to remind people what we're talking about. This is not idle chatter. It's about the, the cleanliness of our city. And I'm, there we go. Do we have, John or somebody with IT has some slides? Okay, thank you.
We're bringing that, Councilmember.
So this was, I took just this week at McFadden. Now, this, there's no storefront. Noah, you make a very good point, and I'll get to that in a few minutes. But this, this is what our, our merchants, our stores are doing to our neighborhoods. I mean, this looks like not our city. And this is code enforcement issue, and it, code enforcement reacts as appropriate. They're not out patrolling the, the backs of stores. You can continue to advance if you would, whoever's controlling the slide. This is Laura from McFadden. I mean, and Public Works was out there, I don't know, maybe three weeks ago, and the next day it's like this. We have intense uses in our city that, and business owners are not going to clean McFadden Square every day. Now, over on the sidewalks, even though they're serving, and I'll talk about this on the next item, they're not cleaning their sidewalks because they've got tables and chairs. You can continue, you can move through this faster. I, I find, and this is Lido, this is on the left, this is Lido, and this is right next to a restaurant, a great restaurant, a very successful restaurant, and they're not cleaning their sidewalks. So I don't know what to say. This is our city, folks. Is this acceptable? That's why I would love to start some kind of keep Newport Beach beautiful. It's not beautiful. These pictures are not beautiful. And staff is in a tough situation because they don't have the budget allocation to do anymore. Now, I love the fact trashcans. I love, on the portering on the restrooms, that's fantastic. It's the steam, pressure washing of sidewalks and public spaces, and no one's going to go into a parking lot, Balboa Parking Lot. I, I just had a loss as to how we can have a main, a line item in our city Public Works budget to keep our community clean. And Public Works is very responsive, but this is a, a daily issue. And it, it just saddens me. And it saddens me for our business owners because they're, those who care are doing a really good job of keeping their little area clean. This is our city. This is why people pay property taxes. They pay a lot of property taxes. We're not levying taxes on residents. This, this is what they, we get back, the 17% we get back from the county on property tax revenues. This is, I mean, I, I'm embarrassed for our city. What do we want to do about this? What can we do about this? So I guess I'm just asking for a line item for power washing to be increased because what we're doing every two weeks is not sufficient, especially in the high-intensity seasonal months. And when I call Public Works, they say, well, we have it budgeted, but we'll come out there, and they'll do it because they're great guys and gals. But we're not putting enough resources against us to, for our visitors who are visiting our city. So Grace, I appreciate what you said to Councilwoman Brenner. I, I hope you could come up with some creative way to keep these sidewalks clean. This has been a deterioration. As long as I've been on the council, this wasn't this way seven years ago. This is a recent phenomenon. So I guess that's, that concludes my comments. I, Grace, I just would welcome your creative suggestions on how we can keep up with the mess in our community.
Thank you. Mr. Duffield?
Well, I don't know many cities that get inundated with 250, 300,000 people on a regular basis, week after week through a summer. And it's not like they go through somewhere and throw a couple of quarters into, you know, help pay it, clean it up. They come and they leave. And what monies do we get to offset what they've done? And Diane, that, this has been going on since way before me, and we've had to somehow figure it out. But it, it is super expensive these days, and, and it's somewhat cost prohibitive in a lot of ways. I don't know what the answer is necessarily, but we, the problem is that we are inundated with people that, in your district, Diane, I, I understand that. But when you say you don't know how this happened, well, I'll tell you, there's 250, 300,000 people. They don't go to Pasadena, where you used to live, or San Marino, wherever. They, they come here. They come here. And so we don't, they bring their own towel, their own surfboard, and they sea and ski and, and stuff. They don't, they might even bring their own sandwich. They don't spend a lot of money here. That's, that's the, that's the problem. They come and they use our stuff, and then they leave. And we have to, my dad used to get so upset about this, and the monies that we have to clean up the beach, just the beach, to siphon through the sand. You didn't show any pictures of the sand. We have machinery that Dave Webb has to maintain and operate and such that is phenomenal, that no other cities have. What city has one of these, several of these machines that, that siphon through acres and acres of sand? So these expenses are tough. They're tough to find where, where do you get the money to do it? And I, I have not been on the Finance Committee. I've always done other committees, but I, I respect for the staff, what we go through. But it's no mystery that we are in, we have this problem. It's, it's been going on for, forever. It, it just, people use our city, and we don't have enough income from, from what they do to us necessarily every year, year to year, to, to, to clean it up. And we also have to save them, save their lives. We have lifeguards we have to pay for. And the, I work closely with the tidings monies that come in, and it's tough. We, it, there's, it's hard to put the burden of all these hundreds, thousands of people that come here on a few businesses and taxing them and such to, to, to do it. It's, it's really tough. And I do admire the Finance Committee for coming up and doing what they can do. Those pictures look bad, but they weren't, they weren't, it wasn't complete annihilation. We're, we're trying. I, I think we do a good job trying to, to do it. And it's, it's a huge, huge problem, much, much greater than I think we have any solutions for. And we'll never stop. The beaches, there'll always be surf out there. There's always going to be sand. There's always going to be surf. So that's just what we inherit. That's what we get. And that's, I'm, it's just an ongoing problem. But I think we do a good job.
Thank you. Mr. O'Neill.
I may take this conversation in a slightly different direction and focus on the budget and say that, good job, Grace. I mean, seriously, like the, I, I just can't begin to tell you the, how, I've, I've been on the Finance Committee for six years now, chaired it for a couple. And last year was a year that everyone will never forget. From a budgeting standpoint, the rapid response of sitting in a meeting, a Finance Committee meeting in, I can't remember if it was February or March, talking about our revenue assumptions, and then immediately one month later, changing all of it and regrouping and making sure that the services that people expect from our city were there for the last 12 months. I mean, that's a really big deal. And, and we didn't furlough our, our staff. We didn't send our public safety home. We didn't cut overtime. You know, we, we were there for our residents and in the ways that they expected. When 911 was called, we had great folks picking up the phone, and we had people responding. When people had questions, our staff may not have been in person, but they were still answering, and they were still responding. And we were there for our residents, and that's a really big deal. And so we walked into this coming year knowing that our revenues are going to be much healthier than they were last year, but they're going to continue to be at levels that are below where they should be, where they, we had pegged them three years ago, where we had anticipated some of our costs. And we are going to be incurring new costs this year dealing with, associated with the homeless shelter agreement with Costa Mesa, seeing the state mandates coming down on us, dealing with organic waste diversion and trash programs. And left, right, and every, every which way, costs increase, and oftentimes not because of our own choices, but simply because regulations have dictated that to us. And despite all of that, we are going to be looking at a budget this year that continues to invest heavily into our capital improvement, seeing around $74 million plus into a capital improvement program that makes a second to none, frankly, around most of this county, let alone the state. We're going to see robust property tax revenues in large part thanks to rising property values because people want to move here. And I will just simply say, yes, we can improve in the pictures that Councilwoman Dixon was just showing, but given the number of people who are coming here because they are moving away from places that look far worse than that, that they didn't look like that two years ago, they know that Newport Beach is a special place, and they'll continue to keep it up. And so, and then we're going to see a rebound of our, of our TOT. I know we are. We're going to continue to support our hospitality industry. We're going to continue to support our business community. Our next item up is going to be exactly that. You know, we're going out of our way to make sure that we're rebounding in ways that a lot of other cities would, would be very envious of doing. And all of that reflects, is reflects, is reflected in this fairly conservative, but, you know, very approachable budget. Because what we're looking at is a budget that includes, you know, slightly under 30% of the general fund going to our police department. I, I just encourage everyone, compare that to a whole bunch of other cities, especially the ones that don't have their own police department, and see what percentage they're paying out of their general fund into outside contract services for public safety. Same thing for fire. You know, and, and on top of all of that, and I think it's really important to recognize that we are continuing to pay down our pension liability in a more aggressive fashion than just about any other city in Orange County. And that really matters. It really matters. Because we're going to continue to see, especially cities, you know, the, the city that's going to get hammered the absolute hardest out of all of this is going to be Anaheim. And we all know that because their tourism industry is getting crushed, their, their reliance on civics, on a, their conference, shoot, I'm sorry, the convention center, thank you. The convention center is decimated. And on top of all of that, their pension liabilities are just spiking on them. And even after they recover, that pension liability is still going to be there. And so the fact that last year we were still able to make a discretionary paydown of $5 million despite it all matters. It matters to the long-term health. And that's the kind of thing that I'm really proud of when we're looking at this budget, is both taking care of the short term and the long term. It's the kind of thing where you're looking at it and saying, in the short term, we're providing the services people expect. In the long term, we're providing the, we're, we're providing the infrastructure that will allow those services to continue for our kids and our grandkids. And that really matters. So coming out of the year that we've seen, being able to look at this and be proud of the budget, I just want to say, good job. Scott, welcome to the city. This was a tough year to come in on. And I think that the staff report alone just shows that you're stepping right in, and I appreciate that. And so to Mr. Blom's point on final note, given the, given what we've been looking at on a general fund basis and seeing that after all of the moving and shaking and the increased amount of resources we're putting toward cleanliness, we're still seeing, you know, just only a slight balance of 32,000 that matters. And so we'll continue to pay attention to this as we go forward throughout the year. But I do want to make an overview statement that this, this one is a big one. And it'll, it'll, it'll propel us forward. So to everyone who is involved, from our Finance Committee, staff, and then to this council, I just want to say thank you for all of the effort that you put in.
Do we have any other council comment?
I, I'd just like to say that being concerned about solving some additional problems in no way diminishes our appreciation for how hard you work and how hard our staff works and how hard the Finance Committee works. We know what a great job you do. And, and so, you know, it's like the squeaky wheel's the thing we focus on sometimes, but that in, in great appreciation for everything that you do for us. Thank you.
Further comment?
Council, Councilmember Dixon.
Oh, sorry.
May I speak?
Yes.
I just wanted, I just wanted to echo that. The sidewalks are a small part to the overall well-managed city that we have. Special kudos to Grace and, and bringing on a terrific Finance Director and the staff and the hard work. My comments about the sidewalks in no way diminishes the excellent staff that we have and the hard-working staff. So, and I believe they know that I care about them and appreciate what they're doing. I'm just always trying to find a, a way that we can get things done. But within this budget, the COVID year and, and everything that Mr. O'Neill said, as I echo, and I just, I'm very appreciative of the fine work that you all did and that we could know that we're moving forward, and this will be over behind us soon. And we'll be back to those prior numbers. So thank you again, staff, for a great job.
Mr. Muldoon.
Thank you. Yes, you're not going to want to hear what I have to say as much. I've been voting against increasing full-time staff since I've been on council. So I see here we've got a couple of full-time positions that I'm wary more about what it looks like down the road. I understand that the, the new pension system is less generous, but I don't know what's going to happen in the future. And I, I personally just have taken that pledge to not support increases in staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments, council? Seeing none, we'll hear public comments from those in the council chambers. Any public comments? Do we have anyone on Zoom? We have one on Zoom. Oh, we've got someone coming down in public comment.
Good evening. My name is Abra Gasser, and I was told that we might be discussing the 38th Street Bridge issue during item 19. I'm not sure if you guys are aware, but almost daily, there's 15 to 20 teenagers, children. jumping off the bridge.
Ms. Gasser, we're on Item 18?
Excuse me?
Oh, I'm sorry, we are on Item 19. I'm sorry. Please go ahead.
Um, when we've made calls to the police department and the lifeguards, we're getting rhetoric that a lifeguard costs $20,000. I think it's obvious that any liability that arises from an injury is going to be much greater than $20,000, and I would look into whether or not you guys have already established a chain of custody on liability by having a lifeguard posted there last year. Some practical solutions that aren't a lifeguard might include installing a bird wire on the railing that prevents any of them from stepping on there comfortably, if at all. It would at least deter them somewhat. Another possible solution is a video monitored system, similar to like a Ring doorbell, where somebody either at the police dispatch or the lifeguard station is monitoring, monitoring it, and they can see what's going on and speak to those, you know, teenagers directly. Something needs to happen. There was students that were jumping off of a two-story house two weeks ago. It's on video, and when I discussed that with the lifeguard supervisor, he said, yes, we've seen the video, we're not really sure if anybody was injured or not. That's not the point. And two years ago, somebody jumped off the Lido Bridge, went through the canopy on a Duffy, and caused injuries. This needs to change. I don't want to live next to a bridge where kids are getting injured. I don't want the city to have to pay the liability bills. Obviously, you guys don't have the funds to do so, but our waterways and our beaches are one of the largest economic multipliers, and with that comes externalities of public safety. So we need to find a solution to deal with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment?
Good evening, council members. I'm Gary Cruz from Newport Island. I'm speaking to the same issue. I urge the, the council to staff the Newport Island Bridge, not as needed, but what we've heard is it might be done by patrols. And the fact of the matter is, with social media the way it is today, when nobody's at that bridge, the jumpers come, and they'll come within 20 minutes of that person leaving. So whether it's a paid lifeguard or a volunteer, they have to have access to the police to respond, and in absence of that, we're having some issues. And the lady just before me mentioned some of them. You have to understand that last year, the lifeguard, a lifeguard was placed there for a reason. And if you take a look at police, calls into police prior to the lifeguard being there, and then after the lifeguard was there, you'll see a marked difference. Before the lifeguard was there, I cringed every time I pulled up to 38th Street to see if I could get on the island. But after the lifeguard was posted there, there was never, there was never a problem. So whether it's a paid person or a volunteer, somebody needs to be there, and somebody needs to have access to the police department. There's been, residents are frustrated when we hear so much about code enforcement, and we hear so much about citations being issued, and we don't want to be in a police state. We don't want citations. We want to be proactive rather than reactive. And if we're going to be reactive to it, then you're required to issue citations, and a police person has to be there to witness that. So it really creates a problem for us when we base everything on issuing citations. There's only one way on and off the island. It's very narrow, 20 feet wide, three-foot sidewalks. What we're getting on that narrow strip is bicycles parked in the street, kids congesting, spectating, watching the bridge jumpers. We're getting pedestrians walking on the sidewalk when they can't walk on the sidewalk because there's no room, because bikes are there and skateboards are there, so they get off and they walk in the street. We've got construction trucks coming on and off the island, and now we have cars parked behind their garage just on the other side of the bridge. So that two-lane road becomes a one-lane road. It's quite a mess. It's quite a mess. Without someone there monitoring it, it'll continue to be a mess. It's sort of, we, we look at this as, you know, I know the city is really up against it with budgets, everybody's up against it with budgets. This is a minor expense, and possibly it's no expense if actually a volunteer could be put there, but the key being, key point being is somebody has to be there eight hours a day, seven days a week. It's not an hour here, an hour there, or let's just patrol here or patrol there. It has to be there all the time, unfortunately. These are not residents that are jumping off this bridge, just like there's probably not residents that are creating the filth in the sidewalks. One final point with regards to jumping off the bridge, you'll never see an island resident swim in that water. That water is dirty. There's a sewer pipe right there, right where they're jumping into that bridge. That's where the back end of the bay, of the harbor, water has no place to go. So not always a dangerous to jump, it certainly is not safe, and I wouldn't want, I don't swim in there, and I live there. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Evening, council. I'm just going to also touch base on that same issue. So this is not just some bridge jumpers going off a small bridge. This has become a YouTube, social media sensation. Who can do the craziest stunt? Who can do the, these guys that jumped off the third-story house, these were the bridge jumpers. These kids are running 20 feet, they're, they're hitting the top of the rail, they're doing flips, they're hitting the bottom of the channel. This is, I mean, this is, this is a serious liability for the city. It really needs to be looked at a lot closer because, just a quick, quick note on last year, last summer before we had the lifeguards in place. So you had 15 kids showing up pre-summer, then 30, and then the word gets out, and then social media goes crazy. Then we got 50 kids, 70 kids, they're blocking the bridge, they're, they're causing issues for the residents, but they're doing the craziest stunts I've seen. And then the incidents and the injuries start happening, and there's, out of four that I know of, so there's two, one kid jumps in, he hits feet first, cuts his foot open, our neighbor Mike attends to him, he had multiple stitches. The one that I saw was the kid that tried to get the, they hit the, hit the rail and do a backflip. Instead, he hits the rail, hits the sand on the rail, falls into the street and hits, and cracks his head. This is what, this is what's happening. So what's, this is prior, the short period prior to the lifeguard, is all this was happening. They hitting the, the stand-up paddlers down below, the Duffys, it's all going to happen again. If, if this is left unattended, it's going to get really out of control, and it's going to be a major liability for the, for the, for the city and also a major nuisance for our, for our residents. So I hope you reconsider how this can be solved. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Gina Cruz, and I live on Newport Island, and I'm going to speak to the same points that you've just heard. Before I do that, I'd just like to tell you that about a month ago, the two signs, the bridge has a sign on one side and a sign on the other, so it can be seen, saying no diving, no jumping, disappeared for a whole week. So as island residents, we talked about it, have one of the jumpers taken them, because frequently they would turn them over so that they couldn't be seen, so it wasn't like they were breaking any rules, or had the city taken them down to replace them? We didn't know. So my husband called the police department to inform them. He wasn't aware of it. So it gives me two conclusions. One, you have youths jumping off who are criminals, taking down city posts. What does that tell you about the mentality of the people who are jumping off the bridge? Two, that jeopardizes somebody who may be a newcomer, a visitor to the city, who doesn't know there's a reason to not jump or dive, and then is putting a predicament maybe to be injured. If the city had taken them down to maybe replace them, doesn't that make them negligent to not be making everybody aware that there's an issue for not jumping and diving? Now, I presume that the sign is there, not to spoil people's fun, but it's because of safety reasons. The tide, I believe, I'm, I'm not an aquatic person, but I believe only comes to about six foot in that area at high tide. The kids don't care, they jump at any level. It becomes more of a dare the lower it gets, and I've seen that, and I've witnessed it. It also becomes a dare when there's a paddleboarder coming by. Doesn't matter if that paddleboarder's got a child on the front, kids with them, it's a little bit of a game, adds to it. The excitement always comes as well from not just standing on this fence and jumping off, but let's run across the road. There's a car coming? Yeah, even better, that's an added point. So you've got all these things happening at once. I listened to the broadcast of the city meeting last time where it was discussed, and I thank you for having that on the City Channel. It's really, really useful for residents. And one of the things that was mentioned was that Lido has a lot of traffic. Well, the one road that goes off Newport Island is the one exit and entrance, so by default, it's become a main thoroughfare. Would the city allow bicycles to litter Newport Boulevard? That's the main thoroughfare. I'd probably suggest, no, they wouldn't. So why is it allowable and acceptable on Newport Island? Why are we condoning behavior that just endangers people? The tourists who come into the city don't necessarily have any understanding of water. Why can't we put a sign saying what the dangers are, so that at least they can read it and decide for themselves if then they want to go ahead and jump? Tell them about the water level. Tell them about the pipe that's just been replaced underneath. Tell them about the dangers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any additional public comment? All right. Seeing none, and assuming there's nothing up here? Muldoon?
I like the idea that Ms. Cruz just gave, that maybe a sign could say it's shallow water, and perhaps shield the city with liability as well. If they knew there was a dangerous item at the bottom of the water, they're, they're assuming the risk themselves, and it shields us from liability. I think the accent made it charming presentation as well, so, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Brenner?
I was thinking, maybe we could have a sign that said sewer pipe, or sewer release, or something there that would help them to understand that's not a good place to be swimming.
Thank you. Mr. Duffield?
Well, I have a sign for you. How about, this is a great juvenile great white breeding ground with a picture of a nice great white shark, and maybe some electric great whites floating around. But the one who mentioned the water quality, first of all, there's every, every day, two times a day, there's a tidal activity, and then in extreme tides, it's six feet, and at most tides, it's less. But twice a day, that much water, that, I don't know where he thinks the water's going, but if you go out in front of his house, it's four or five feet of it's gone. Where do you think it went? There, there is movement up there, and I've seen the water quality up there is very, very exceptional to other parts of the bay, and it's, it's, that kind of just bugged me when I heard that, but I think a picture of a great white might, might help.
Ms. Dixon?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Since we last talked about this, Grace, have you had a chance to think about, we were talking about getting a cert person there, a person with a safety jacket, and now with the signs, I think those are good ideas. Have you had a chance to operationalize any of that?
Not yet, but we are, we are looking into that right now, of use of volunteers.
Okay, because the summer's starting, and it was warm weekend last weekend, so good. Let's give it a try, but we, to the gentleman's comments, I think it needs to be constant presence, hopefully a volunteer, that would be a cert volunteer, that would be helpful. Thank you.
There's no further council comment. I'll close the public hearing on the budget and the resolution. But first, I'd like to just say, I was on the Finance Committee this past year, and it was, it was really instructive for me, and I just felt that I should be close to the process, or at least observe the process during my year as mayor. And I have to commend Mr. O'Neill for just being an excellent chair of that committee, and he's been the steward of the committee for a number of years now as chairman, and it's just, it's phenomenal leadership, and the council members are something else, and our citizen volunteers on the committee offer great advice. It's just a tremendous mix, and Mr. Catlett is, just demonstrated his skill sets over and over, and I just really, really, speaking as a citizen, you know, it just is so comforting to know that this, the city's budget is so well-managed, so drilled down on. Ms. Leong is an expert in her own right in finance, so there are a lot of eyes on the city finances, and despite the tremendous income the city receives through property tax and TOT and sales tax, the attitude is never, we've got a lot of money. The attitude is always, how can we save? How can we do it better? And it just keeps getting, in my view, in my short tenure, I believe, it just keeps getting more and more distilled as we go along. And it is an honor to be on the committee and to participate in the budget, to watch people's money, and try and do the very best with that money to improve the quality of life for everyone, and to make the tough decisions from the major items to the, to the, to the small items. The beach, and it's, it's fine to have disagreement, and we should have disagreement, the struggles we have over beach cleanup, or over a purchase of a, of a VAC truck, or whatever it is, but the questions should always be answered, and there should always be good, straight talk about what the right path forward is when it comes to the budget and what the city's needs are. And the discussion, my experience on councils, that discussion never stops whether the Finance Committee is in session or not, and it's, it's just a very good thing, and this city is very fortunate, and it's one of the reasons why, obviously, that the city just keeps going from one strength to the next. And we're just, it's in a particularly, I feel, a good cycle now with all the help we get from all the different directions on formulating the budget over the long process of that, getting toward where this, where we are now. So thank you, everybody, Grace and Scott, thank you very much. So let's vote. Do we have a motion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move staff recommendation.
Do we have a second?
In there, right.
Mr. Blom will second.
Councilmember Brenner?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Aye.
Councilmember Dixon?
Aye.
Councilmember Blom?
Aye.
Councilmember Duffield?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Muldoon?
Yeah.
Mayor Avery?
Aye.
The motion carries 6-1.
Thank you. All right, the last public hearing is Item 20, Resolution Number 2021-58, An Extension of Emergency Temporary Use Permits Issued to Businesses Due to State COVID-19 Restrictions.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have to recuse myself.
Thank you. Do any other council members have a conflict? Okay, seeing none, do we have a staff report?
We do, Mayor Avery. We do have a brief PowerPoint presentation if we can. What I want to preface first is that this item is really dependent on if the emergency ordinance that we have in place, 2020-005, is repealed or terminated. This resolution that we have before you will take into effect if it's adopted and kind of extend these emergency use permits. Let me go ahead and turn it over to Senior Planner McConanova, who just, we have about 10 slides we just want to cover with you real quick, and then we can answer questions.
Good evening, Mayor Avery and council members. My name is McConanova, Senior Planner to the Planning Division. So this resolution this evening is, again, related to the emergency ordinance that was issued under COVID that allowed for the expansion of commercial and institutional uses. This is primarily for restaurants, but there are a few churches and other service uses that were authorized to expand into private property, parking lots, sidewalks, and public This just goes over that. Moving along, this is just an overview of the existing locations that have been authorized to have emergency temporary use permits. that have been authorized to have emergency temporary use permits. The green identifies locations within the public right-of-way. It's about 30 locations. The yellow identifies locations that are in public parking or park areas. And then the red are all of our other locations, about 60 additional restaurant locations. So it's a total of about 100 restaurant locations that we've authorized expanded outdoor dining. The shaded gray area I just want to highlight here indicates the coastal zone. So you can see which locations are in the coastal zone and which ones are outside of it. So we've heard a lot of interest in allowing these restaurant uses to continue and to perhaps go on to a permanent use. So this would establish a bridge or a path to achieve that goal, should that be the request. So this resolution this evening proposes a 90-day extension of the existing emergency temporary use permit program. That would be automatic to existing emergency temporary use permit holders and would continue through September 6. In the meantime, city staff is pursuing a study and analysis of parking rates that are authorized under the zoning code. So to bridge that gap until the analysis process is complete and those findings are presented to the city council, we are proposing a limited-term permit application process for these emergency temporary use permit holders. And under this resolution, we're also proposing to waive the application fee for those limited-term permits. And then finally, once the study and analysis of parking rates is completed, the different holders of the emergency temporary use permits would need to apply for an amendment to their existing entitlements. Typically, that's a conditional or minor use permit. And if it's in the coastal zone, it would also require a coastal development permit. So the resolution this evening covers the first two phases of this. This is the 90-day extension, as well as establishing the limited-term permit process and fee waiver. Just a little more detail about the 90-day extension that's proposed. Staff's thinking in this time period that's proposed is that the summer season is very, very important to our economy and for the vitality of restaurants in the area. So this would provide that bridge, if you will, for the near term in the summer season and would allow for restaurants to plan ahead and then decide if they want to pursue a more permanent solution for their restaurants. So the primary obstacle to why we haven't authorized these outdoor dining locations on a permanent basis is parking. So parking is the major challenge, which is why we're undergoing this study and analysis of parking requirements. Right now, that study is going through the RFP process, but we're proposing two different phases. The first phase would look at the restaurant parking requirements themselves, whether the rates are appropriate, as well as ride share and bicycle incentives to allow for reductions in the required parking for restaurants. So findings from that phase are expected by the end of the year. Second phase would be a more detailed analysis of curbside management and potentially the establishment of parking management districts. So those findings and recommendations would come later on in the next year, 2022. So the process to bridge the gap until we have parking code findings and recommendations would be the limited-term permit application process. Right now, the process that's in our zoning code has a two-part review process, depending on the term that's proposed. For less than 90 days, it's an administrative review process. For more than 90 days, it is a public hearing reviewed by the zoning administrator. And a limited-term permit can be authorized for up to one year. So the extension of the emergency temporary use permit process would be automatic, but the limited-term permit process would need to be reviewed on an individual basis by staff. So we would look more closely at the location, availability of parking, and the land use compatibility of that existing use and whether it's working in that location or not. Locations in the coastal zone would require a coastal development permit. So that's definitely another consideration, whether or not a limited-term permit should be issued for a particular location. This is the fiscal analysis portion of that discussion. So we have about 100 individual locations. And the worst case would be the one-year term. So the fee for that one-year term application is just under $2,000. So that's why we are approximating about $200,000. I can tell you that not all of those locations that have been authorized, emergency temporary use permits, are pursuing that right now. I did drive around town to take some of the photos for this PowerPoint. About, I don't know, half, maybe, a good chunk of them have already chosen to move inside to their regular brick-and-mortar operation. So a good chunk of those may not choose to pursue this permanency process. And then just one other note of clarification, applicants that do want to pursue the process would be responsible for paying the public notice fee of $497. So again, just to summarize, tonight, we're looking at a 90-day extension of the emergency temporary use permit process. That would get things through September 6, 2021. And then from there, this would establish a limited-term permit process for ETUP holders wishing to proceed with their use. And then finally, it would propose a waiver of that application fee. And that concludes my presentation at this time. Are there any questions, staff?
Mr. Duffield? You don't have anything? All right. Ms. Brenner?
A question about the public notice fee that we charge and what happens if we have neighbors who do oppose something like this. Do we have a process for recognizing that or what?
So thank you, Councilwoman Brenner. So the public hearing process is a publicly noticed zoning administrator hearing. So we would notice the properties within 300 feet of the business, and those property owners would get actually a notice. Our public hearings right now have been virtual through Zoom, so they can come and participate, as they do even in the council chambers here, participate through Zoom, through that zoning administrator hearing, and they could submit public comments. And the ZA zoning administrator officer, hearing officer, will take those into consideration.
Does he or she have the ability to rescind a permit if they are causing a nuisance in the neighborhood?
So this is going to be a limited-term permit. So the application is requesting an extension for this outdoor dining. So if the zoning administrator can deny it and not approve it, or the zoning administrator can move that item, that application, up to the planning commission for their consideration.
Okay. And I have a couple other. Are we having any kind of rules as far as the hours go of operation?
So each restaurant will be looked at as a case-by-case basis. And then from that, save for if McConna was reviewing an application, we would work towards setting those hours of operation, those conditions of approval. So there'll be new conditions of approval established for each business if they're requesting an outdoor. And we'll take into consideration the parking impacts, the noise impacts, all the other kind of surrounding impacts, any of the public comments that we receive for that application.
So is it safe to assume if a business abuts a residential district that their hours would not be conducive to the neighbor still being able to sleep at a reasonable hour?
I can say that if there are businesses abutting a residential, that the staff and the ZA hearing officer will take all those into consideration and make adjustments for those specific conditions.
Because we're already having complaints from neighbors of some restaurants about those issues.
Correct.
Although there are some that do a fabulous job. I hear appreciation constantly from the people in Corona Mar about the bungalow. They do a great job of interacting with the neighbors, and if they have a problem, they are very responsive. Cappies has done a really good job of, they hire the neighbors in our veterans facility there to help them manage the parking. So it's not necessarily prohibitive if you have nearby neighbors, but it's how you deal with it that really counts.
And that's why each application will be looked at on a case-by-case basis.
Okay, I think I might have, oh, do we have any sort of fine structure or anything involved in if there are frequent complaints against a business?
There's always a fine structure through code enforcement, which also regulates land use. So the answer is yes. And also that if, since you have a limited-term permit, that can be revoked.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Any other council comments, questions?
I have.
Diane?
Just to follow up on Councilmember Brenner's, Simone, I'm very supportive of this conceptually. We want to do, again, whatever we can for our restaurants and other businesses. But the encroaching onto public space, that's a gift. And I'm comfortable with that for a limited purpose, and we'll see where this goes. What about, just to follow up on Councilmember Blum's idea, can, without, I'm not supporting or proposing any new regulations, but how can we communicate, educate our business owners that they are in the public space, they're getting it for free, can they help maintain it in terms of the cleanliness? What can we do about that?
Certainly. If council this evening adopts this resolution, we're going to notify all the permit holders that hold a temporary use permit currently. So in that notification, usually it'll be in a letter form, we'll go ahead and indicate to them that if they're stationed in the public right-of-way or on the public sidewalk, that they'll have to maintain and keep it clean.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, sorry. We'll be able to notify them.
Any other questions, comments? Mr. O'Neill?
Yeah, I would just point out that the City of San Francisco recently said that they would be keeping outdoor dining in public areas throughout the rest of the year. And I figure that if the City of San Francisco can remove bureaucracy to do something in the City of Newport Beach, probably can do the same. So I'm looking forward to supporting this. Thanks.
I have one more question, Brad. From what I think I read, they're not allowed to block public access to pass by on the street, right, or on the sidewalk. Like, they can take parking places, but they can't block access to the sidewalk.
No, correct. The Public Works Department reviews these emergency use permits, and they actually have a condition on them that says maintain four-foot minimum. So, and you know, clearly, there's some areas that are a little bit challenging, but they're supposed to maintain a four-foot minimum clearance.
Thank you.
Any other council comments? All right. Here are public comments from those in the council chambers.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. My name is Jeff Shields. I'm an attorney representing Jill Markowitz, who is a Newport Beach resident and property owner and business owner and has been in her current location for over 15 years and happens to be adjacent in a residential area next to certain restaurants. She's opposed to the resolution as currently framed. And what I would like to do is try to explain both why and how it might be modified in a way that would be supportive of residents who are being negatively impacted by the few restaurants that are not adhering to the situations as they should and who abuse the privileges that, as Councilmember Dixon has indicated, have been gifted to them. To be clear, Ms. Markowitz is not opposed to helping the restaurants and is not opposed to the wonderful things that all the restaurants do for the city and how, again, the vast majority have been properly handling themselves, and some of them were noted by Councilmember Brenner, and have been, again, exemplary. However, as it happens, Ms. Markowitz is right in the 29th Street area of the peninsula by Lido, happens to be adjacent to two restaurants, Helmsman Ale House and ARC Butcher &amp; Baker, one of which happens to be an owner of our conflicted Councilmember Blum. She has, again, lived there prior to COVID, a peaceful, sedate, wonderful situation, loves her business, loves the neighborhood, has never had any kind of a problem. However, once the opportunity to move those restaurants out into the parking lot directly behind and the area directly behind her house and her business occurred, she's essentially been consumed by enormous noise levels, a party atmosphere essentially, hundreds of people essentially out there, often late at night, drinking and crowding and so forth, trespassing on her property. The parking situation has been worsened. It directly impacts her property value and her quality of life. She's not the only one. There are many other residents that are adjacent to her that are similarly situated. The concern here, she's called again and again and again to the police, again and again to code enforcement. Many times citations have been issued, essentially ignored, because the next night, it continues and the same situations occur. So the concern here is not to stop all the restaurants from being able to do this and not to give them a 90-day extension or what the very laudatory motives here are of the city. That's not the concern. The concern is to do it in a blanket carte blanche fashion, which allows all businesses to get the privilege, even though some have abused and don't deserve it. So I don't expect necessarily the council to say right now that the reviews that will take place for people who want to extend need to take place immediately or that 90 days isn't a reasonable bridge. However, let me just say, the current phraseology of the proposed resolution simply says, all it says in Section 2, is to allow people to apply. It doesn't include any of the protective language that was just discussed. That protective language is in the staff report, and it says, "Applications to be reviewed on an individual basis based on merits of location, availability of parking, land use compatibility, where appropriate, and subject to a public hearing. And it's anticipated that outdoor dining design and processing guidelines will be developed to ensure permanent outdoor facilities are aesthetically integrated and do not negatively impact surrounding area." Please include that language in the resolution. Why not include that protective language in the resolution if you're going to pass? All that does is guarantee what was being represented will happen and that neighbors will get the notice, will have these standards in place to protect them against the few restaurants who have abused the system. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment? Do we have any Zoom comment? So then I'm going to end the public hearing. And do we have a motion in a second?
I'd like to move the staff recommendation, including the protective language that was just referenced.
I second that.
All right.
Can I ask, Mr. Harp? I'm not really clear on why, what difference that language would make, because these are going to be automatic renewals, so it's not like they would be reviewed. Anyone with an existing permit would be automatically renewed based on this resolution. So including any of that language doesn't seem to change anything for existing permit holders.
Yeah, I think there may be a slightly misunderstanding regarding the process. So all the existing permits would just automatically get extended, as you just noted. And then the protections that council is referring to are basically built into the code. They're already in the municipal code, so there was no need to basically rehash, you know, what's already in the code. They're going to get the notice. People are going to have an opportunity to go to the hearing. So I think that maybe there's just a misunderstanding about how the process works.
Okay. I understood that to be redundant, but that sounds right. Okay. Then, I mean, I'm not sure it changes anything. I'd vote for it with the language. I'd vote for it without the language, because it doesn't seem to add anything.
I don't think it adds anything. I don't know if Mr. Juoz thinks there's any point to adding it or not. But I would think that would go into Section 2, not into Section 1, with additional language.
So if I may, the, these protective, the resolution just really extends what we've already issued out until September 6. So there's not going to be any further review by staff with those that have already been permitted. After September 6, if somebody wants to continue with outdoor dining and they want to, they want to continue with outdoor dining, they'll have to submit a dining, they'll have to submit a new application to the city and make that request. And those protectives that the gentleman mentioned are already part of the code, and that's what staff's job would be, is to review that. This reso just extends what we've already done through, until September, and we're not going to do any further review besides just ensure that they comply with their conditions. After September, if they want to continue with the outdoor dining, whoever that business is, they'll have to submit a new application, and they'll be reviewing on a case-by-case basis.
That actually makes the question different. If those protections are in place right now, why are they, why are citizens suffering this sort of, these sort of circumstances right now, before we even talk about extending?
So, so these are, appears to be noise complaints that are being handled by Police Department and Code Enforcement, and they are being addressed. Maybe it's one of those issues that needs to be reviewed again, specifically for those two businesses that the gentleman mentioned, but they are being addressed by the Police Department and Code Enforcement.
And we don't know the status of that review at this point in time.
Well, we've, the, both, both divisions have addressed them with the property owners, both of the businesses, and we've decided to allow them to come into compliance. If there are further complaints, we have nighttime Code Enforcement, and we have nighttime police officers, and we address them on a reactive basis.
What is the hour that they're supposed to stop operation outside?
It's, it's different for each business. I don't know specifically for those two restaurants. I don't know off the top of my head. I don't, do you know, by chance?
Generally, we have an authorized uses after 9:00 or 10:00. So majority of 9:00, there's a few that do have 10 o'clock PM.
So anything, any disturbance after those hours should be called into Code Enforcement and the Police Department, and supposedly there will be consequences.
So just to recap, you know, the permits will automatically get extended through September, and then they'd have to come through a new process if they wanted to move on beyond that. And those protections are already built in through the municipal code. So you either move staff recommendation or add that additional language to Section 2. I don't think it makes that big a difference.
Okay, so we have a motion by Ms. Brenner with the additional language.
Councilmember Dixon has her hand raised.
But just to, I agree that there's a redundancy, but can it just be referenced in the resolution that that applies, just to tie the two together? Is that possible? I see those cross-references, just to cross-reference it.
Yes, that's the motion.
Okay, thank you.
So Ms. Dixon, are you a second?
Yes, she was.
She was, right? Okay, please vote.
Yes.
Councilmember Brenner?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neil?
Yes.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes.
Councilmember Duffield?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Muldoon?
Aye.
Mayor Avery?
Yes.
Okay. We're back to current business. Item 21, Resolution Number 2021-59, Underground Utility Assessment District, Number 113, West Balboa Island, Award of Contract, Number 7979-1, and Authorization of Limited Obligation Improvement Bonds.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I have conflict on this issue related to potential business.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other council conflicts? Seeing none? We have a staff report. Do we need one?
Mayor, this is the next step in the assessment district, so certainly we're here to answer questions.
Great.
Yep.
Any council comments or questions? Thank you. We'll hear public comment from those in the room here. Do we have any Zoom comments? No? Any additional council comments? Do we have a motion? In a second? Move the item.
I'll second.
Thank you. Let's vote.
Councilmember Brenner?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neil?
Yes.
Councilmember Dixon?
Aye.
Councilmember Blom?
Aye.
Councilmember Duffield?
Yes.
Mayor Avery?
Yes.
Motion carries 6-0.
All right. Item number 22 is an appointment to the Visit Newport Beach Incorporated Executive Committee.
We have paper ballots, and in order to be appointed, the applicant must receive
The city clerk will collect, or has collected, the ballots, and will read the votes.
Councilmember Dixon? Your vote?
Oh, you want me to say it verbally?
Yes, please.
Sharon Wood?
Sharon Wood. Councilmember Brenner votes for Scott Calder. Councilmember O'Neil, Sharon Wood. Councilmember Blom, Jim Mosher. Mayor Protam Muldoon, Sharon Wood. And Mayor Avery, Sharon Wood. Councilmember Duffield chose not to vote. Sharon Wood has four votes. So with that, I also would need a motion to waive Council Policy A2. Motion in second.
So moved.
Second? Who's going to second?
I'll second.
Thank you.
Okay, and now we will vote on that motion. Councilmember Brenner?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neil?
Aye.
Councilmember Dixon?
Aye.
Councilmember Blom?
Aye.
Councilmember Duffield?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Muldoon?
Aye.
Mayor Avery?
Aye.
With that, Sharon Wood is appointed to Visit Newport Beach, Inc. Executive Committee.
Thank you. We're on to item 23, the coronavirus COVID-19 update.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just want to touch real briefly. The statistics continue to look very good. I think it's a very good sign, and all of California is also looking very good. You can see statewide, there's 24 counties in that yellow tier throughout, and everything looks to be on track for this June 15, which I guess is now next Tuesday for the full reopening, without any of the tier systems to be in place. There are still some guidelines and measures for large events, but in general, it is supposed to be open. The one area we are reviewing right now is the Cal OSHA. They came out with some guidelines this last week that were a little bit more complex than we would have liked. So we're still going through that in terms of what that'll mean for, for our workplace internally here, at least. On the good, on the good news side, our library services, we continue to reopen on our branch side. Councilmember Brenner mentioned earlier on our CDM branch, so that's certainly good news, and our others here as well. And in bringing this one up, I didn't put a note on this, but, you know, after June 15, our next council meeting will be after that date. So a thought here is, we would, I know this probably saddens many of you, but perhaps take the Plexiglas down up on the dais. And we are, we are open now to the public, so I think we would be fully reopened in that way. And the thought is to go back to the full in-person for any type of public comment, and remove the Zoom phone-in option. Just wanted to get a sense of that from, from council as well. But that was our thought process here, as we get back into a little more normal along that way.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I'll take that as a positive sign.
I have something later, but that's fine.
Okay, well, and then just real quickly, I'll just turn it over to Chief Boils to just talk a little bit about the vaccinations going on.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council, Jeff Boils, your fire chief. I just looked at my notes here and realized the print's a little too small, so I'm going to wear my glasses. I'd like to take a second, or a minute, if you will, to recognize and highlight our efforts in the vaccination whole process. And I'll just summarize here for you. Where we are is the county transitions to the mobile and local pods. Back in December, you may remember, the fire departments in the, in the county started up the vaccination pods over in Huntington Beach, and then OCFA in Irvine, and up in Anaheim. We did 11,519 total doses at the Huntington Beach site over a total of 34 days. There, we did the general, general public, starting with those over the age of 75, and then it dropped to 65, and then healthcare workers and public safety. Then we moved over to the fairgrounds. We took those, we shut that one down in late March, and in April, we opened up the fairgrounds. And the fairgrounds have done a total of 1,400, or 142,396 doses. And I just wanted to put that on there. I talked to John Pope earlier today. That's an amazing number of how many people we funneled through the fairgrounds there. And if you think about, back in December, we were really given a request by the county to get out and start figuring out how to set these sites up. We didn't have a lot of direction. We've never really done this before throughout the country, let alone the state or the, or the county. We had nine days lead up from the request from the county to the time when we opened our first pod over in Huntington Beach on December 26. And a couple of those days were Christmas Eve and Christmas Day. So I just want to point out, we utilized our lifeguards, our firefighters, our paramedics. The lifeguards were tremendous in fulfilling that role. So now, as we've shut down the fairgrounds, we're transitioning to what they're calling the mobile pods. And we've done five of those here in Newport Beach. You may remember, two of them were at the Oasis Center, in partnership with HOG. And then we've done two at the Civic Center here, and then we did one just last Friday down at lifeguard headquarters, where we started to dabble into getting some homeless as well, which that was a little bit unorthodox and organic, if you will. We were just literally going to the homeless that were in the area and asking them if they would like to be vaccinated. And turns out, some of them did take us up on it. So we're venturing into that. We plan to partner with Natalie a little more in the future, and try and reach out to that population as much as we can. And with that, I just wanted also to add that we were the first in the country, and perhaps maybe the only at this point that I know of in this county, but especially here in Newport, to have lifeguards do vaccinations as well. So with that, you can see, we also added the ZIP codes there, because I know Ms. Brenner and Mr. O'Neil have been very proud of their districts or their ZIP codes. 92657 is still in the lead at 85.7% for those over the age of 65, and 92625 is coming in at 82.2%. And the stats are showing that 70% of California adults have had at least one dose. So I think that's getting us safely to that June 15 date, where hopefully things will start to see some normalization. And that is the end of my report.
Thank you. Great report. And we have council comments?
I do, Mr. Mayor. So
Thank you.
I wanted to ask, because if we're, I mean, after June, our next meeting's going to be after June 15, and it'll be before the July 4 parades that we're going to be hosting. So I assume we're going to be lifting the state of emergency, and I'm wondering what the process is for that, and whether we'll be bringing that up at the next city council meeting for discussion.
That is something we can take a look at. I know at this point right now, the state, the governor, has said that his emergency declaration will continue. I haven't heard otherwise from the county, which is a different type of agency. So I think if it's something to have a discussion with at the next council meeting, it would be helpful to see if there's, there's an interest from the council to bring that back for this next meeting, and we can certainly do that.
I have a question.
Yeah, I mean, I, I have very, I have a very strong desire to have discussion on that item. I, I'm having a tough time believing that the city of Newport Beach would host parades while in a declared state of emergency on the basis of a condition of extreme peril to public safety. That seems rather inconsistent. So yes, I do think we should be bringing this back for discussion.
Mr. Blom?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to echo what I think is going to be echoed up and down this dais, is that we've done such a good job during our state of emergency, but I think we're all feeling like it's time to relinquish the power that we might have for this, just as we would probably like everyone that's in government to relinquish the power at this point. So I'm in full support of moving forward with that.
Ms. Brenner?
My question was just, do we need to do that in order to have an outside activity like the parades? Are...
I don't think we need to do that.
Okay. I just wondered if they were dependent upon each other?
No, I, no, I don't believe so.
Mr. Muldoon?
Yes, I'm not aware of any more advantages to declaring or being under state of emergency here for local government. I'm happy to hear what, what they could be. It seems our first responders have done an excellent job, as has our city staff, and life is starting to get back to normal. The governor's going to have to answer to legislature that they're doing their job, is supposed to limit his emergency powers, but I don't suspect that's going to happen. But here at the local level, I don't see a reason for us to continue it, personally. Thank you.
Okay, any public comments on this item? Seeing none in the chambers? Anything on Zoom? Thank you. Any additional council comments? Is that good enough to bring back?
I believe so, or, I mean, if we could take a straw vote on, just bring it back for the discussion to do that at the next council meeting, that would certainly be helpful for, for me. Okay, yep, it looks, looks good. Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda is motions for reconsideration.
Motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council. Either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
All right, are there any motions for reconsideration? Seeing none. Tonight, we are adjourning in the memory of Jean Wagoner, and just an incredible person. And I know Ms. Brenner has some words.
Yes, I believe we have a photo, yes. So our adjournment this evening is in memory of Jean Wagoner, a Newport Beach resident whose three decades of service with the nonprofit Serving People in Need, otherwise known as SPIN, helped to house tens of thousands of homeless individuals and families. Her memorial service last Saturday was as full of life and fun as was she. Included in her accomplishments, which were referenced, was her disdain for Orange County Airport. And indeed, while living in Dover Shores, she was instrumental in fighting the airport and the resulting settlement agreement. Her most recent involvement with the city was serving on our homeless task force and the Homeless Ad Hoc Committee, where she and our other committee members, who have long worked on this issue, managed to educate both council members and city staff who had to learn on the job. She was a wealth of information and assistance, and along with our other committee members, connected us with Family Solutions Collaborative, the National Alliance to End Homelessness, the Costa Mesa Homeless Solutions Network, the Orange County Continuum of Care, and others. Jean had been in and out of the hospital for the past few months, and I especially want to thank Robert Braywith at HOG Hospital for making sure she got the quality of care while there that she provided for so many others. She mentioned often how well she was treated. Jean is survived by her sons, Jeff and Brian, and their families, as well as countless friends and associates who will carry on in her honor. I know her board of directors at SPIN are already working on efforts to build Jean's house in her honor.
We are adjourned.